It looks like it slowed down a little bit, so I think whenever you're ready to start, we can go ahead.
Awesome. Okay. Good evening, everybody. We're calling to order our school board meeting for February ninth, starting at six thirty-six. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us. As usual, we will start with a moment of silence, and if we could please, take a moment in that moment of silence to lift up and think about the Pritchard family who has recently lost their daughter Nicole, to the Decatur community who has lost a community member and a student from Renfro. The level of pain that our community and that family's feeling is insurmountable. So if we could all just have some positive vibes and take a moment of silence for that family, that'll be greatly appreciated. Thanks so much, guys. All right, and for the board members and all who can, if you'd like to stand for the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Okay, so let's take a look at the agenda. Are there any revisions for the agenda? Hearing none for the minutes from the last meeting as well as our work session. Our last board work meeting was on January twenty-seventh, and our work session was January, excuse me, opposite. Board work session was January twenty-seventh, and our regular monthly board meeting was January twelfth. Do we have any revisions to the minutes for those two meetings? Okay, so the agenda is accepted and approved as presented. Unanimous? Alrighty.
Alright, our next item is the ECLC Spotlight.
Yes.
Alright, so I cannot remember who we have presenting that, if it's Sarah or somebody else, but we can let them pull up their presentation. While we're finding that her or whoever's presenting, just a quick shout out to Shayna for finding that moving flag. I really liked that it was a a motion graphic. Good job, Shayna. Thank you.
Thank you, Shayna.
If there's supposed to be audio, we can't hear it. Just say no.
I just sent a nudge. Sarah Garland wasn't added as a panelist. I just sent her the invite to come on up. She should hopefully rejoin in a moment.
Okay. Thank you.
We have elevator music while we wait, or?
I was gonna say normally we can move on to the next agenda item, but that's the big one, so.
Right.
Don't think we want to get stuck in there.
Hi, sorry about that.
No problem, you know, we're still figuring out this Zoom thing, so.
We actually recorded a video, so us and there should be sound to this presentation.
Shayna's got it. Just remember Shayna, when sharing, you also need to click the share audio button.
Good evening, Dr. Duty and School Board. Thank you so much for allowing us an opportunity to talk a little bit about what we're doing at College Heights with regards to equity. Dr. Carla Zizik, our instructional coach, and I will be walking you through our presentation this evening, and we'll be sharing a little bit about all of our hard work. I'm gonna start off by sharing with you what our equity vision is. So at College Heights, our equity vision is to align, evaluate, and update integrated systems of professional growth, assessment, inclusive practices, and accountability that build competence and confidence for every student while eliminating achievement gaps. So we really are keeping this equity vision at the forefront of all of our work and initiatives that we're doing at the school, and making sure that we really are working and striving to look at how we can be eliminating achievement gaps for students at this young age. So at the end of last year, we had an opportunity to apply for a grant. We sat as our school equity team saying, how can we really support our equity vision? And we took advantage of this grant cycle that was provided to us through the Early Learning Property Management Company, also known as ELPM, and they are the company that actually built College Heights. And every year, they have a grant cycle and they award fifteen thousand dollars to high-performing programs that have initiatives that really think outside the box. And so we were so pleased and excited that we were awarded this grant last year to support the equity work that we're doing here. We really were focusing and targeting early literacy and how we can do that through the lens of equity. We're looking to build early literacy for young children, and we've taken a holistic approach by using the lens of equity to thoughtfully implement new practices and initiatives. We decided to focus on early literacy and equity based on what our data was telling us. And so the school equity team and the administration really use the data to determine what our needs were when it comes to equity with the students and the family and the staff. So first, we looked at our qualitative data to determine what the staff needs were. And we really determined that our needs are looking at the culturally relevant practices of our staff, and included in that are our texts, culturally relevant texts in the classrooms, and we're looking at all classrooms, birth through pre-K. And so we're looking at how can we use an equity lens to really determine what culturally relevant texts look like and what we do with those texts, and looking at culturally relevant teaching practices. The second data point we looked at was really all about ESOL support. So as you know, the City Schools of Decatur, ESOL services start when the student is in kindergarten. But clearly, we have students younger than that that have those same needs. And so we are looking at how we can support our twos and threes and four-year-olds that have ESL needs and how we can look at supporting the families and students before they get to kindergarten. So this grant is going to help us do that. The third data point, we looked at the past four years consistently, our data is telling us that students in our early Head Start program, so students who are two years of age, have consistently scored below their peers in the areas of expressive language as measured by our preschool evaluation scale, which is the assessment we use in the fall and spring. And consistently over the four years, we're seeing that these students are starting College Heights at a lower foundation of expressive language. And we really want to see how we can support those students and those families with creating a stronger foundation before they even start school. And then lastly, we looked at our MTSS data, and currently forty-five percent of our students in MTSS are needing interventions around expressive language, and that will also include those students that are needing ESL support in areas of expressive language. Our long-term goal, so what we really want to get out of this grant with regards to equity is we want to look at building connections with families, increasing teacher capacity and culturally relevant literacy practices, and implementing evidence-based interventions for students needing support in expressive language.
How are we going to achieve our long-term goal? We're going to approach it in three different ways. First, by providing professional learning to our staff as a whole. Second, by working with students and teachers in the classroom, modeling interventions and providing support directly. And third, partnering with our community and offering support to parents and families on family literacy practices. Our school support has two different approaches right now. First, our school-based equity team has been participating in monthly roundtables using the book Don't Look Away. It's about Rachel Justice in early childhood. And from these roundtable conversations offered by Highscope, our curriculum, we are going to make a team of train the trainers who are going to redeliver the content to the larger staff and also provide professional learning to each other around culturally relevant pedagogy. Secondly, we have three staff members who have been accepted into Zaretta Hammond's culturally relevant teaching by design, and the professional learning experience that they're participating in is centered around building capacity and developing a strong instructional practice and culturally responsive and sustaining pedagogy. We're very excited about both of these two opportunities for our staff members and feel like it will really move the needle on staff capacity for doing culturally relevant work and using the lens of equity to support students. Second, in classrooms and with children directly, we're going to be using some of our grant funds to contract a literacy consultant who'll be providing early intervention, classroom support to children who aren't meeting benchmarks in expressive language as measured by our preschool evaluation scale, and in particular focusing on our English language learners. Using an equity lens, our school-based equity team has also assessed and curated a collection of books and resources, both professional texts and props that go along with those books for all of our classrooms, birth through pre-K, so that their materials are updated, culturally relevant, and reflective of the diversity of our student body. With our parents and community, we are working to sustain our partnership with the Decatur Housing Authority. In the past, we offered a series of family literacy workshops in person, but however, we've now pivoted and those literacy workshops will be virtual in format. They will introduce developmentally appropriate home literacy practices, will be modeled and presented by our own staff. These workshops help families focus and develop literacy strategies for infants, toddlers, and preschool-aged children that they can put into action at home. In addition, our advisory council has created an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Parent Group. Our most recent event, Talking to Young Children About Racism, focused on how parents can help children value diversity and challenge unfairness, and how to use children's literature to facilitate conversations on race and racism. So how will we know if we're successful in our efforts to meet our goals? First, we're going to be looking again at expressive language scores on the PES, hoping and measuring the kinds of improvements that we see. Second, we'll increase the culturally relevant materials and resources within each classroom. Third, students who are involved in the RTI and MTSS process due to expressive language concerns will continue to be monitored for progress and improvement with the hope that they'll exit the process. Fourth, parent attendance and engagement in the Parent Literacy Workshop Series, we're hoping will be consistent and/or increasing. And we're also providing a qualitative survey to measure any increased knowledge of literacy practices for families who have attended the Parent Workshop Series. So as we go over all of this different data, we'll see if we're successful in our use of these precious grant funds and continue to tweak and change our approach as needed. We would be remiss if we did not mention our Head Start program update. As you know, the Head Start grant unfortunately with City Schools of Decatur ended this year. However, we really want to express our gratitude and appreciation to the board and to Dr. Duty, who have offered those families who were part of our Head Start program, tuition-free spots, and our zero-to-three program. Families have taken advantage of this wonderful offer, and we are so appreciative of their continued participation in the program at College Heights. Thank you so much for your support of early childhood learning and of all of our school family here at College Heights, and we appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Sarah and Carla, that was a great presentation. Really appreciate it. And I think they, at least Sarah is online. If you guys have any questions, we can do that. I will also clarify, in addition to that last slide about those early Head Start students, there is one student who will still need a scholarship next year because they'll be in a tuition-paying field. So I reached out to DEF to see if they would be able to support that at all, and they're going to explore that possibility as well. So and the others are moving into pre-K where they don't have to pay tuition. So do you have any questions or thoughts to share after the presentation?
I think that was very well done. Thanks. Thank you, Sarah and team. That was very good.
Thank you. We have an awesome facility there at College Heights.
Absolutely. All right, so no comments from the board. We are moving on to the in-person and virtual planning for our Renfro and here high school, taking away David.
All right, so in just a moment, I'm going to turn it over to Greg Wiseman, principal at Renfro Middle School. I just want to do a quick introduction to let you know, we are going to focus on grade six through twelve in our presentation tonight. We still are looking at options for pre-K five. We know there are some folks who wish the kids went more hours each day. We know that there are some folks who wish more students could come back, and those are things we're exploring. But we're going to focus on six twelve tonight, and next week, we're going to dig a little more into pre-K five and hopefully soon after, we can share some updates on those plans. So just wanted to make sure to set the stage for anyone who was hoping to hear things about other grades. We really are only going to be talking about six to twelve tonight. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Greg to do a presentation about Renfro. If you guys could hold questions where possible till the end, that may be most efficient. Greg's going to present, and then Rochelle, principal of DHS, is going to present. And if it's possible to hold your questions till the end, you may get them answered as the presentation goes. And we may be most efficient that way. If you need to jump in, feel free, but if you can hold the question, that would be great too. So without further ado, Greg, you want to take it away?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Duty. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for this opportunity to present Renfro's plan to offer a face-to-face option for students. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now. Okay, so we began this process late October, developing what seems like hundreds of versions of plans. As with COVID, there always seems to be a moving target, and it's like a whack-a-mole game where we fix one issue with the with the schedule, and then it creates another one that needs to be addressed. So we've been at this for a while. Before I begin, I have to recognize the Renfro admin team of Summer Clayton, Sarah Tolton-Buck, Alexis Glenn, and Kristen Carably that are responsible for most of the creativity and vision behind the schedules I'm presenting. They are remarkable. You can think of me as just the pretty face presenting these plans to you. So let's get started. We developed two schedules for two different scenarios. Schedule A will be used if fifty-two percent or more students choose to return to in-person learning. Schedule B will be used if fewer than fifty-two percent of students choose to return to in-person learning. Those numbers are based on fifteen students per room of all ELA, math, science, and INS classes. So Schedule A again is used if fifty-two percent or more students choose in-person learning. So in-person students are divided into two groups. Each group has in-person learning, two mornings for core classes, and virtual learning, two mornings for the same core classes. All morning classes are taught concurrently. In-person students then take world language and connection classes virtually at home in the afternoon, not concurrently. Virtual students take world language and connections in the morning, then core classes in the afternoon, all virtually, and no classes taught concurrently. For Schedule A and actually for Schedule B as well, Wednesday mornings, Renfro offers advisement and two help sessions, all to students virtually. I'll walk you through a graphic of this schedule in a minute. Then Schedule B, again, this is the one for if fewer than fifty-two percent of students choose in-person learning. In-person students would take ELA, math, science, and INS classes four days in the morning, go home, take world language and connections classes virtually in the afternoon. Then virtual students take world language connections in the morning, then ELA, math, science, and INS in the afternoon, all virtually. Okay, and I'll show you a graphic of that as well. All right, then, so basically, for both of these schedules, students remain on current teams with current core teachers. Okay, could there be an exception? Yes. If there is an out-of-the-box team on a certain grade level that eighty-five or ninety percent of those students choose in-person, and then another team on that grade level only chooses twenty percent, then yeah, maybe we'll have to do some hard decisions there. Okay? Students will be also, for either one of these schedules, they'll be cohorted with the same fifteen students or fewer, depending on the learning choice people make, for each in-person core class. Okay, so for those in-person core classes, there'll be cohorts of fifteen students. Okay, an exception? Well, at this point, we can count on all students that receive special education services will be on more than one cohort who choose in-person learning. Okay, so Schedule A, Schedule B, the learning choice link, and other important plans can all be found on the Renfro website. So for the board members tonight, and for the benefit of the parents tuned in tonight, I'm going to navigate through this information via this page, so then the parents will know where to go after this meeting. Does that make sense? Okay, so here we go. So let me go to the website. So this is the main page of the Renfro website, and all you have to do is go to reopening plans. And this is the one-stop shop for everything that you need to make your choice. Okay, so before I get into the specifics of Schedule A and Schedule B, let me just share a bird's eye view of this page. All right, so at the very top, this is where parents can go for their link to the parent portal to make their learning choice. Okay, so they would click there, they would log in, and this possibly will be open tomorrow morning to go ahead and make their choices. Once you log in, you're going to click on the word more, and then click on the words learning choice portal, and then you can make your choice. Okay, so the Schedule A overview that I just shared with you is all right there. And then I have some links here where if you want to see it from the teacher's perspective, you can click there. If you want to see it from the student's perspective, you can click there. Okay, I'll click on the overview to check it here, and then when we go into Schedule B, same thing. There's all the information there in a glance, and then the different perspectives there. Then, at the end here, I will have updated a video that describes the arrival process and the dismissal process in a video that'll be there tomorrow, and we already have a the procedures of the different processes and procedures of the school here. So I've already finished the recordings of a video description of Schedule A here and Schedule B here. I've just finished recording those. They'll be linked there. So if you want to have me describe those schedules in detail as you're looking at them, as I'll be doing with you guys, they will be available for you guys. All right, so let me go ahead and start with Schedule A. Okay, where am I? All right, so again, this is if there is more than, this should be fifty-two, not fifty-three. Schedule A is used if fifty-two percent or more students choose to return to in-person learn. All right, so this is the in-person schedule. I'll show you in a second. And then this is the kids who would choose virtual schedule here. All right. So there's a couple of things I need to point out to you. So again, we have three distinct groups of kids here. Okay, we have group one of in-person learners. We have group two of in-person learners, and then we have the virtual kids that are at home. All right. So basically, what happens here is this. We've split these group, these in-person learners, into groups. Group one will take their four core classes in person in the school on Mondays and Tuesdays. So this might be ELA and then math on Monday, then it might be science and individuals and societies on Tuesday. This group one group will take those classes in class, while the group two folks are taking those same classes concurrently while that group two, those group two folks are home. Okay, then conversely, on Thursday and Friday, the group two in-person group kids are taking those core, core one, two, three, four, ELA, science, math, INS. They're taking those in person, while the group one kids now beam into those concurrently and take those concurrent. So these core classes are taught concurrently for the two in-person groups. Then, after dismissal and lunch, those in-person students will then take their connections and world language classes in the afternoon. As you can see, there are these four forty-five-minute blocks, okay? And they will take their connections at world language class in one of those blocks. On Mondays, if their connections and world language classes are odd periods, they'll take them Mondays and Thursdays. If they fall on even periods, they'll take them Tuesdays and Fridays. Okay, so they'll have these forty-five-minute classes. Maybe they'll have a connection and a world language class here in this block somewhere, and the other times will be used for asynchronous learning. All right, so that is the in-person for Schedule One. And if you go down to the virtual kids for Schedule A, spoiler alert, this is going to be the exact same schedule for virtual kids on Schedule B. Okay, so the virtual kids are now, it's flip-flopped. They're taking the connections and world language classes in the morning while then they take the core classes in the afternoon. So very similar to the, they have the four forty-five-minute blocks where they could have their odd period world language and connection classes Monday, Thursday, even ones, Tuesday, Friday. They have lunch, and then they have these ninety-minute blocks for core classes, okay? And they mirror each other, Monday and Tuesday mirror Thursday and Friday. So they might have ELA and science on Monday, and then math and individuals and societies on Tuesday. So what this is, is a forty-five-minute live lesson followed by a forty-five-minute asynchronous. Forty-five-minute live, forty-five-minute asynchronous for Monday, Tuesday, and then if followed, then it goes again Thursday and Friday. We had to spell this out because we had to really spell out these asynchronous times because this block of time and that block of time is when those core teachers will use that for some, for planning time. Okay, they have precious little planning time in this. So that is the Schedule A, again, if we have more than fifty-two percent of our students choose this option. All right, so now let me go to Schedule B. All right, again, this is if fifty-two percent or less choose to go in person. All right, and you'll see right now that like the guts of this schedule is pretty much the same. Okay, this is the in-person schedule here and the virtual schedule here. All right, so let's go back to in-person. So since we have 52% or less or fewer students coming in-person in this scenario, all of those students can come in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday for their core subjects. And these core subjects are 75-minute classes, by the way, same with the other schedule. Okay, so all in-person kids come in for their two core subjects each day, transition in the middle, okay? Then in Thursday and Friday, their other, their, their core subjects in the morning as well. Okay, so all kids, these are not concurrent, no hybrid situation, but they're still on their teams and they still, and they're going to be cohort. Okay, and then it's the same for the connections, the same 45-minute sec-blocks there, connections, world language classes, if they're odd, they have them on Mondays, Thursdays, even Tuesdays and Fridays. Before I, and actually, let me just jump down to virtual real quick here. This virtual schedule is exactly the same in schedule B as it is in schedule A. Okay, they have those connections blocks in the morning, and then they have those core subject blocks, same timing and everything in the afternoon. But let me jump up here real quick, and I want to talk a little bit. I've, I've glossed over a few things that I want to just make clear. So first of all, Wednesdays, okay? Wednesdays, this is the same for schedule A, for schedule B, or if you're core, excuse me, or if you're in-person, or if you are virtual. Okay, we're going to have help sessions, 45-minute help sessions, just like we started a couple of weeks ago, for students for enrichment or, or remediation. And we will also have our advisement on Wednesdays. Okay, we have to have advisement virtual because those kids are all mixed up on different teams and different grade levels. So Wednesday mornings, there's help sessions and advisement, and then Wednesday afternoon break for kids. Okay, then lastly, what I wanted to show you is talk a little bit, a very little bit, about coming to school, transitions, and dismissal. Okay, so I know, you know, a lot of the school board members, I know a lot of you well, and you've had students at Renfro and the folks out there, lots of you have been to the school. And you may have seen in the past, in pre-COVID, what it looks like when kids come to school at Renfro, what transition breaks look like at Renfro, and what dismissal looks like at Renfro. Well, that was pre-COVID, okay? During COVID and during this plan, like those days are gone. All right, these, the, 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 the block for kids coming into school is going to be very deliberate, it's going to be staggered, and it's going to be very well orchestrated. I'm going to have a video on the website where I describe it in great detail. Okay, same with transitions. You know, the transitions pre-COVID are four minutes. You've got kids getting out of a class and running down the hallway, going to the other class. They've got four minutes, okay? For this, we have 15 minutes. All right, we are going to orchestrate this and make it very deliberate and take our time and do it safely, okay, between one class and the other class. And then dismissal, again, pre-COVID, that bell rings and it's mayhem. Okay, now, it's again, it's going to be very deliberate, staggered. You know, it's going to be walkers and bike riders go, and then car riders will go, and then, you know, be lined up in certain areas. Students are going to enter the building by a specific doors based on the team where they are, the closeness of that door, and kids are going to be leaving through those same doors. So just know that these dismissal, arrival, and transitions are going to be very deliberate, and I'm going to have videos coming up later, probably posted tomorrow that describe both of those in a lot of detail. I think that's all I have at this point, Dr. Duddy.
All right, thanks Greg, that was very thorough. We may have questions after Rochelle, so stick around, but thank you, those were very good presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle now to present the plan for Decatur High School. And you are muted Rochelle.
Yes, I am, thank you very much. I was making a comment about how age goes before beauty, Greg. So, all right, so thank you everyone, again, like Greg, there's many people behind this, this plan. Not only the APs, but also my COVID readiness committee was instrumental in helping us make some of the decisions when it came to how we were doing instruction, how we were going to be in the hallways, et cetera. All right, so just like Greg, I have a schedule A and a schedule B. My parameters are 45%. This is based on the number of students that we can fit into our classrooms. So if we have more than 45% of our student body returning to in-person learning, we're going to use schedule A. If we have less, then we are going to use schedule B. All right, so here is schedule A. So like all of our schools right now, we are going to be releasing for lunch at home. And so for schedule A, we will have group A come in person on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then group B will be at home with also the virtual students, the students who choose virtual. And everyone will be logging in to the computer at 8:35 to their classroom with their teacher in their classroom, and they will be participating in the instruction and learning while the students in the classroom are as well. Then they go home at 12:30 for lunch, and then at 2 o'clock, everybody logs in again for asynchronous live support. Wednesdays, we, as you all know, you heard, we heard comments at our last board meeting, the DHS SLT heard a lot of comments, and our wellness Wednesday plan right now is working very well, so we would like to continue that on Wednesdays. And then on Thursdays and Fridays, the other half of the students who choose in-person learning will come into the building, while group A and our virtual students will be at home logging in. The only difference between schedule A and schedule B is that for schedule B, if we have less than 45% of students choose in-person learning, we will be able to have those students come all four days with concurrent learning for the students who choose virtual. So our goals when we were creating these schedules is that we wanted a consistent weekly schedule that students and families and teachers could plan on. We wanted the ability to remain socially distant in our classrooms, and that is the 45%. That's based on the numbers that we saw parents and students choose back in the fall. We've done a lot of work on Wellness Wednesday, and we really like the plan that we have right now, and so we would like to continue that. Our goal is to, for students to eat breakfast and lunch at home. Both the COVID readiness team that I have and teachers and students showed concerns about eating in the building, eating in a large cafeteria. And so our goal for this schedule was to allow for them to eat breakfast and lunch at home. We wanted to have an easy transition to virtual learning in case a class or a teacher had to quarantine. And we wanted to continue to provide high caliber learning experience for those virtually and in-person. Like Greg, I am going to share my website. So everything that I have presented is here on our website. If you go to reopening plans, I have links here to all parts of our COVID manual for returning in-person. At the bottom, we have returning to in-person videos. We have a video on what concurrent learning will look like, a video on operations and safety, and a video of me narrating what this school schedule will look like for students. Some of the big feedback we heard from families and students in the fall was that they didn't feel like they could make an informed decision about how their students were coming back to school. We heard that loud and clear, both Renfro and the high school, and so we're making sure that we're letting you all know what school will look like, both in-person and virtually. So please check out all of our videos. And just like Renfro, we have here how to make your learning choice selection. This will also go out in a district email to families tomorrow. So before the board asks any questions, I would like to say that Greg and I both have spent a lot of time with our teams talking about how to come back and when to come back. And it is our recommendation that the middle school and the high school students come back at the earliest March 8th. This is in line with the time that we gave our elementary schools to prepare to come back, which is two and a half weeks. And so we really feel like for families and teachers to plan, our recommendation would be no sooner than March 8th.
All right, thank you Rochelle, great presentation, and I want to thank you both, a couple of things. One, I know you guys can tell this by looking, but sometimes because they've done such a good job, it's filling a lot of this down, I cannot tell you the number of hours that have gone into this planning and all the things behind the scene to figure these things out. As you know, we often talk about how kids don't come and make nice neat little packages, right? And that you really have to, as soon as you start talking about doing things different with scheduling, it gets very complex very fast. And so kudos to them and their teams for all the work they've done. It's really been absolutely amazing. A couple of things I want to share just to make sure they don't get lost in the shuffle. One, for these two plans, we are not recommending any specific metric to determine when these go back. We think we're being very careful with these plans. If you've looked at the data recently, you'll see that it's dropping very, our cases are dropping very quickly, and things are looking good. If we expanded beyond these plans, that's when we might want to consider implementing some metrics associated with such expansion, much like we've been talking about at the pre-K5 level. I also want to clarify that we got a lot of feedback after the last learning choice survey, and so we are removing the flex options. And that way, people are making a choice one way or the other, and there's none of this flex in between. And that's why we created two plans, that is the plan that will flex, not the people that will flex. And so depending on the percentage of people who respond a certain way, you'll see which one of those plans gets implemented. And then finally, we didn't mention, but I want to make sure to mention, we are going to continue to encourage people to avoid using our bus transportation if at all possible. There may be some very specific circumstances, of course, with like special education students, for instance, who need specialized transportation, that's, that's not an issue. There may be some safety considerations for kids of certain ages at Renfro or the high school. And so we'll address those as we need, but we really want to limit our buses as much as possible to be elementary students so that we can keep them as spread out as possible. And the vast majority of middle school and high school kids do have alternate ways to get to school in many, in many situations. And so we're going to continue encouraging families to explore other options for getting their kids to school. But if you want to touch on those things, and we will open it up for any questions or comments you might have as the board.
The present, those presentations were awesome, thank you guys. I could definitely tell all of the hard work that you've put into it. So I will hold my comments till the end, and Heather, did you want to start with some comments or questions?
There we go, just had to unmute myself. I, I also think that those plans sound extremely thorough, conservative, and well-thought-through. And I like that we're able to accommodate basically all students who want to come back. So my first question is, for how long is this decision valid that the families are being asked to make? And will there be another opportunity, given just how fluid our situation is with, you know, cases coming down and hopefully continuing to do so, and potentially more distribution of vaccines, et cetera? Just, I'm wondering how long this choice will hold and if there'll be another option.
That's a great question Heather, and I'll, I'll jump in and answer one part, and then Rochelle and Greg may have more to add. But basically, what I picture happening here is that we hope that your choice will stand until we make whatever the next phase of our plan is. And so if we're able to welcome back more students, or for more days, or for more time, that we would like this, the decision you make to stand until that point. We also recognize that there are very special circumstances for families sometimes, and so we would ask them to reach out to their principal if they, you know, two weeks after they make their selection, something significant changes in their life, and it really changes what their option would be, they should reach out to the schools, and we'll do our best to accommodate them. But in general, that's what I would say, and it's the same way we handled it with the elementary as well. But Rochelle and Greg, feel free to jump in if you have anything to add there.
Yeah, and Greg, excuse me if I speak for you, but I think we both planned our schedules so that we, they're easy to manipulate if things are changing, and if we decide to change things in different ways. So yeah, we're, we're prepared for that when, whenever we have to.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, depending on the numbers, depending on those percentages of learning choice, I would imagine would be, you know, will be flexible, would be a lot more flexible if Steve's folks need to move from in-person to virtual. Maybe a little less flexible, but we'll work with folks to go virtual to in-person.
And we, we should share also, I just realized we should mention, one of the reasons schedule A is the hybrid option is just based on the results we've gotten in previous learning choice surveys. It appears to us that they, they most likely will be on that hybrid option if people present their choices the same way that they have been presenting them previously. So I just want to make that clear as well, so that everybody knows we are anticipating probably being over those percentages and implementing schedule A in both instances is what we would expect to happen.
Okay, I also wondered if you could just talk for a minute about the teacher support for these plans?
Rochelle and Greg, you want to jump in there?
So I had a group of teachers who helped me, they made comments, they threw things out, they added things. I think the teachers, the number one concern is how many students that they come in contact with during a period of time. And I think this definitely, this schedule is really, it hits the mark as best we can. And for me, the number one thing was about the food and the hallways, and by limiting the number of students in the building at one time, I definitely think that we're, we're trying our very best to, to mitigate those concerns from the staff.
Um, I'll just, I echo everything that Rochelle said, just to add to that. You know, we presented the, the plan to the staff in, in paper, you know, early, I guess it was over the weekend, and then we had a staff meeting yesterday afternoon. And one of the things that made me realize, yes, I want until March 8th to, to finalize everything, is that the staff has given us so much input and so much, so many questions about A and B, and just face-to-face in general. So as we're presenting, we had a Google Doc there where folks were just, you know, putting in like questions, suggestions, questions, suggestions. So, you know, I think the admin team and I, you know, we're looking at some, you know, we're getting into the weeds a little bit, where we're, we're really looking in some of the big picture things. And the teachers now with their input are really getting into the, to the weeds of taking it from a, you know, a piece of paper into like real life. So, so they're going to be extremely helpful for that.
Dana, did you have some comments or questions?
Yes, so, and I guess Greg and Rochelle, I don't know that you necessarily had the decision that you all were able to make the decision of whether RMS and DHS returned, or did you just, you know, probably carried out the charges that you all were given? And so, and I think that you all probably did the best that you could, given the situation. I still think, I wish that we could wait until teachers were vaccinated at the very least. You know, numbers are dropping, but Dr. Fauci has predicted by March that the more contagious variant virus will be the more dominant virus come March. You know, the communication that went out said that we have a few cases. We've had a few cases since January 19th, but in reality, we've had 24 confirmed cases. Or 25 confirmed cases, and we currently have 104 individuals in quarantine and nine in isolation. And so those are significant numbers for me. And we don't know how sick they are, or what the And we don't know how sick they are or what the long lasting complications there will be for those. Folks and who just, those are just the cases since January nineteen. And so I just, I wish that, I wish that we could wait. And we all recognize that concurrent teaching is not ideal. And how challenging that's going to be for teachers to supervise students in person and virtually. And, but again, I know that you all. I think, you know, carried out your charge. And so my, my other concern is about subs. When we bring back RMH, RMS and DHS, will we have enough subs? To handle, you know, the increased number of absences that will happen because of. Cases and quarantines and things like that and what the plan is for that.
So Rochelle, do you want to jump in? I saw you wanted to respond. I'd be interested in both your thoughts of whether you feel like you were told you had to come up with a plan to open at all costs. Or if this is something that you were interested in doing as well as your thoughts on the, the other things that were mentioned there.
And, and thank you, Jenna, for those kind words and for recognizing how much work the teachers have been doing, both in, in what they're doing now and what they will do. We have been creating plans probably every two weeks. Like just anticipating when we're coming back, because I think just like parents and students, you know, want to come back. Teachers got into this work because we love being with kids. So. You know, as far as creating these plans, we've been working on this since September. And so I think these plans show the parameters that we feel. The most comfortable with and that honor the work of our COVID readiness teams. So. Those are the parameters that we worked around. My only recommendation is, as we're looking at dates to come back. You know, Greg and I can't say for sure like when we should, but we are saying we don't think we should before March eighth. So that is, that is what we're saying. If another decision is made, we of course will honor that. But we just, we know our staff, we know our school and our families. And so we're trying to be thoughtful about. The time that we have to prepare.
And can you address Rochelle? Were you told that you had to open on March eighth or did you guys choose that date?
No, no, no. I mean, we just chose like, we knew we couldn't open sooner than that. So that was why we chose that date.
Clarify, I, I'm not saying that they were told to open by March eighth. I'm just saying that I know that since we have been trying to get back, there has been planning. I mean, we want to do school, right? I, I understand that. I know that you have been working on this since the summer. But we have been trying to figure out the, the best time. And all I'm saying is that. I'm not trying to pass judgment on Rochelle and Greg. For these plans. I think that they have done a great job, given the circumstances. And I appreciate that, you know, them saying not before March eighth. I wish it could at least wait until. We, the teachers are vaccinated. And I'm saying is that, that decision, I don't know if that was under their. Power and control to make that decision to wait.
I, I think that we all would really love to be vaccinated. And so I think that is something that universally. We are all in agreement with. And I'm really excited by our nurses getting trained on how to give vaccines and all of. The things that are coming, so that as soon as we get the green light, our, our teachers and staff, we're all ready. But I, I will say that, you know, we are learning. Where Greg and I talk to our counterparts at the K five level daily. And we are supporting each other as we're working through the process, as we're communicating positive cases to families in the community. And I really feel like we are able to learn from the successes at the K five level. And that's just because we have a very collaborative leadership and team. So they've been doing really good things and we want to build on that for our older students.
Right. And, and then Jana, thank you so much for your kind words and, and, and just I echo everything that Rochelle said. The only thing. You know, I'll add is like, I want nothing more than to get shots in the arms of my teachers. I'm, I mean, I'm dying for that to happen. So, so I'm, I'm with you there. One, one hundred percent.
And I do want to clarify, Jana, I'm not sure what communication said. We've had a few cases. I think, I, I hope we've been pretty transparent about how many cases we've had. And I don't know of any communication that said a few. What we did do is put on a communication that shared that as we analyzed the cases. There were two cases that we could not rule out in school transmission. So I don't know if that's maybe what you were speaking about. But the, we have had, hopefully been fairly transparent as, as transparent probably as any school district, I think, on what cases we have had.
I was referring to the staff scoop, but I know that the dashboard has all of the cases listed, but. That, that verbiage came from the staff scoop.
Okay, thank you.
And Louis, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I think it's, I appreciate these plans. I think they're very well thought out. You know, thank you for. For coming up with something that can get us back to school. I think it's very important. I think everybody recognizes that. And I think it's time. I just want to thank you and your teachers and your staff for, for putting this together. To be frank, I mean, I'm disappointed at March eighth. And I understand and will defer to your recommendations on that. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm not directing you one way or the other, but I understand. Recommendation, I wish that we could do it sooner. And I, you know, I feel like we're almost a, a full year. We've gone virtual. And given how protective and well thought out these plans are, and given the success we've had, K through five. You know. I, I, I just wish, and I just leave it at that. I wish that we could get in, you know, March one, every week counts. But one way or another, I, I appreciate the effort and the spirit, the good thought that went into this and, and. I'm excited that we're going to get back.
Thank you, Louis. James, any comments or questions?
Yeah, um. I guess Louis is often the one who expresses disappointment that we're not in the classroom, but I think that is universally shared amongst a bunch of people who ran for office. Thank you for your time. The, can either of you talk a little bit of just about the concurrent model? I mean, if I were going back in the classroom with two and a half weeks and had to start doing the concurrent models, sort of the support that's in place and. As a parent who's signing up for it, steps we're going to do for that.
Yeah. So James, I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, we do have a video on our website that Mr. Hatfield did. That outlines, that shows what it will look like inside the classroom and the experience of students who are at home. So I would encourage any Decatur High School parents to take a look at that video before making their decision. And the reason we chose a concurrent model, and we've been doing professional learning on this since the fall. We knew that just because of the nature of our courses. We, it was going to be hard to have a virtual school and then an in-person school. And so we've been working on ways to do it effectively. And so we've been working with teachers on what this would look like on the technology. So that we feel like our students are getting the best possible education in the classroom and at home. So I would just say, look at that video. Teachers will be talking, they'll have. You know, students in the class, they'll be doing work on their computers, but the teacher will be interacting with them. And then they will be able to answer questions from the students that are at home virtually as well.
You know, I think we, as, as, as a staff and as an admin team. We're doing our, our planning based on trying to avoid the concurrent situation as much as possible. And, you know, the, the, the middle school is structured differently than the high school where we do have teams and, and things like that. So almost all of our plans from again, October on were. Were, did not involve any kind of concurrent learning. I think like in the high school situation, the way the high school is, they kind of knew, there's like no way we're going to. Do this without concurrent learning. So I'll be, you know, perfectly honest with you in our planning. You know, the, the, in, in order to have the two options. We didn't really come to, the light bulb didn't come off in my mind that, okay. Concurrent's going to have to be an option here, one of our options until kind of late in the game. So that kind of goes to the March first and March eighth thing for me, like start, i- if we do. Schedule A with the concurrent learning, having that start at March first is way too soon for me. I'm even kind of nervous about March eighth, to be honest with you, because I think me and my admin team and my staff. Are maybe not as up to speed and prepared for that as, as the high school is at this point.
And I don't know if you remember, James, but we shared a lot of the research we're doing about concurrently and learning previously, which. Will be able to roll out for the middle school and high school as well, to help get, to get them up to speed on what was learned when we looked at that before. For those who, who need the extra support.
Right, um. I, I mean, I asked this here, Dr. Duty, maybe you can talk about it. And you've given a few updates about the vaccine and some conversations you've had. It seems to fit in well here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So as you know, we are really pushing hard to try to get vaccines for teachers. I think everyone in the district is on the same page that we would love to get anyone vaccinated who wants to be vaccinated as quickly as possible. We are working with the Cab County Board of Health. I was just in communication with them again today. And Esten is actually leading up our effort to make sure that we are ready to go. So on any given day, if they tell us, all right, we've got vaccines, we're going to have a plan ready to go. And so he is leading that effort for us. That is not in sight yet, just to be clear. They are still working on that phase one A and teachers are not in phase one A. And I think it's been made pretty clear that. There are not going to be any changes to that. I don't think that, that there's any equivocation there that. There, there's going to be that change despite a lot of hope that there could be. So. We are just going to be prepared. Our nurses are getting credentialed with the Cab County Board of Health. The soonest we could get in for those meetings is in, I think, two weeks, if I remember correctly. And so they've already gone through the training. They'll get credentialed and at that point they are allowed to give vaccines once they're available. So we will be ready to go. And but it just, unfortunately, we got to wait for the doses to come.
That's it for now.
Since it's on a similar topic, I'll, I'm sorry, Tasha. I'll, I'll just share real quick. Because it has come up about the rapid tests that we're working to procure. And that's on the agenda for later today, but it's related to, to the whole, the whole piece. We are planning to purchase the Binax Now Rapid COVID Tests. They are dipped another layer of the mitigations that we're looking at. We found that at the elementary level, we've noticed some instances where it may have been possible to avoid a quarantine. If we had had a test like that available, because every once in a while someone will come to school. You know, they think they have allergies or something like that. They don't really meet all the criteria for who should be sent home. But there's just this inkling like maybe we should go one step further. And this will give the nurses that option to have that one step further. So. If a teacher comes to them in the morning or calls them and says, hey, I'm just not quite sure. The nurse can give them that test before they're in contact with anybody else. And we can tell kind of a high level right away if they're positive or not. It is not the same as a PCR test. And so oftentimes you would then follow up with a PCR test depending on the results. But it'll be another tool in the toolbox of the, the nurses, just to kind of monitor what's happening in the schools and another layer of a Swiss cheese model.
Thanks. I, I hadn't finished answering all my, asking all my questions earlier, but I, I thought you did a great job just now of segueing into. One of my questions was, and it was just wanting you to expand a little bit to share. Our approach about quarantining, because it's in our plan. But if someone hasn't read all the, maybe all the fine print on the, in the plan and then, you know, some of our dashboard. Just, they may wonder why our numbers are so high or why we're quarantining entire classrooms when that doesn't technically meet, you know, the.
Great question.
Less than six feet for more than fifteen minutes criteria.
Yeah, great question. So as part of our cautious approach to rolling this out. We are quarantining people that may not meet the definition of close contact to the letter. And so I'll give you an example. Say we have a student that is attending a class at an elementary school. And they're also attending a pod in the afternoon. And so they're with their classmates in the morning for several hours in, in the classroom. And then they're in the pod with another group of kids for several hours in the afternoon. And that, that child ends up testing positive. We quarantine the entire class and the entire pod. For anyone who was present on those days when that child may have been infectious. And that is way beyond what close contact is actually, actually defined as. So one of the reasons you see numbers as high as they are is because we're being very cautious with our quarantine. As we see the results of what's happening in terms of whether or not people who are quarantined end up coming down with virus or not. As we see changes within the environment around us in terms of case counts and percent positives. We may start becoming a little bit more strict to that definition of close contact, but we're monitoring first. Exactly what's happening in the schools in actuality before we make a change like that. But that's why you sometimes see a very large number of people's quarantining. Because of a single case, that's why. And I'll also share while I'm on the topic, because it comes up often. People ask the question, well, why then are you doing, you know, why do you have pods that aren't the same cohort as the kid in the morning? And so the couple of answers, one, we just don't have the ability to keep kids in that small of a group for a pod. And two, we are, feel very strongly that we would much rather have kids in a controlled environment. That we know what mitigations are in place, because we are going to such an extreme level with our mitigations. Than having them out in the community in some other childcare arrangement in the afternoon. And so. That question comes up every once in a while. I think it's actually answered in our FAQ, if I remember, but if it's not, we, we should answer it there. But just to clarify, that's one of the reasons that we have the pods and we're doing them the way we are. Because we do feel like we can control that environment a lot better and, and know where those students are. So it's all those things combined. Hopefully that answers your question, Heather.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to thank principals Loftren and Wiseman again for. Your really good work on putting together these plans that are very well thought through. Just, I want to just emphasize. That the impact on the mental health of our students cannot be underestimated. And I really appreciate that all the students who. Do choose to come back will have the opportunity to come back, whether or not we go above or below the percentages for. The hybrid models. So I really appreciate that. And just for the academic reasons. I know that there has been a tremendous amount of improvement between the twelve and the eighteen week grade comparison data. And the high school has done a great job trying to reach out to those students who are at risk. But even so, there's still a lot more students who are failing classes this year than last year. And so it's obvious that. Some students really will benefit from being in person. And so I just really appreciate both of your hard work on identifying those students. And I'm, I'm hopeful that bringing them into the buildings will make that an even easier. Job for teachers to connect and, and really bring hope and, and inspiration back to those students.
Can I just share real quickly too, just because you brought it up, one thing, I, I agree a hundred percent that data on how, how hard the schools have worked. To get kids to passing and, and catch, catching up. I just want to share anecdotally related to that. One of my children has struggled a lot. And the teachers at Renfro have been so unbelievable with just their compassion. You know, the whole compassion over compliance idea, they have gone above and, and beyond for the kids. And making sure that they're getting the supports they need in the virtual environment as well. So I just want to share that as. You know, there's a lot of different ways to approach these things, but I just want to make sure to give a shout out for that, because I know that's happening throughout the district for lots of different kids.
And, and if I can just add to that, like, you know, when we have like academic recovery, when we have kids that are missing assessments, missing assignments. You know, that kind of dodging, dodging the work in, in, in person pre COVID. I mean, we literally have folks who like go into classrooms, grab kids by the scruff of the neck, get him down. You know, get the assessment out and talk them through and, and get them to do the work. Obviously, in this situation, it is just so much harder to do that, right? It's just so much harder. So we still have. You know, we have kids that are, you know, that, that are, that are struggling, that aren't getting the work done, that aren't doing the assessments. And then just to, to try to get them to do that, that work is, is, is to even reach out and to set up the, the Google meets. And then just to, to try to get them to do that, that work is, is, is to even reach out and to set up the, the Google meets is, is very, very difficult. And then, you know, we also, um, you know, we did a proposal to have kids come in on Wednesdays, when we had Wellness Wednesday, to just targeted kids that were just, you know, not showing up and not doing things, to get them in and to, and had teachers volunteer those, those Wednesdays to come in and, and spend a couple hours with them to get them caught up and to get them to have a plan for the next couple of days. But just that, yeah, the, the, the virtualness of this just makes that, that, you know, that there's, there's the ability for us to do those things so much harder.
I, I had just one other quick question um, about students with IEPs. And uh, because Greg briefly mentioned that um, those students uh, may, will not be co-horted. And so I just wanted to ask about mitigation in those students in terms of moving in between cohorts and engaging with those students. And, and, you know, especially to teach them things like that.
Sure. So first of all, we, we gotta wait for the learning choice, um, you know, to come out and, and to see who these kids are, right? So, you know, my, my plug to all the parents watching, as soon as that learning choice um, option is open for you to take it, take it and, and do that survey ASAP. So getting back to that, when, um, when we've, and, and this is another reason, March first to March eighth, you know, we've got to see who all these kids are, alright? And then we'll work really hard with, okay, here are the sixth graders. Here are the sixth graders that are in special education. Here are the teams that they're on. What little moves can we make to possibly get them in a cohort? Or to reduce the number of cohorts they in? We're gonna go to that minute level to do as much as we can to, to mitigate that. But, you know, a lot of these kids that are in special education are cross-teamed. They're not just on the blue team, right? You know, and, and I know I'm preaching to the choir. So, so we, we, you know, so you know, we have to really identify, A, who are the special ed students that are coming in person? And then what are the little moves that we can make to, to get them in as few cohorts as possible?
Sasha.
Yes, I, um, most of you guys already asked my question, so um, thanks. But I do have one. Um, so for, you know, we hear a lot from the community about um, making sure that kids that need to be in school um, or need to be in person, whether that is for, you know, academically or for mentally, or maybe a combination of both, making sure that those students um, have the opportunity to be in school. So is there any way that you, um, you all are kind of documenting and keeping track of those who you might feel from your level of being a principal, or maybe even um, guidance counselors or teachers where you, you're reaching out saying, I really feel like your, your students should be in school or would, would um, benefit from being in school? Maybe if it's a parent that didn't necessarily choose that or didn't choose one, one way or the other, do you have a way of identifying some of those kids?
Natasha, we did that for our Wednesday in-person proposal. Um, we reached out and it's a moving target. So we keep asking and, and bringing kids in. If the anyone who we don't get a choice from, we will be reaching out. So that we make sure they know all of the information and that they record a choice, even if it's just with us and we can go into the system and put it in for them. So just like the K5s did, um, anyone who did not make a choice, we will be reaching out to.
I'll add too, but our goal is to meet their needs wherever they are. So if it's in person or virtual, our goal is to meet their needs in that environment. And so there are kids that we would like to see in person, but for various reasons, it's just not feasible for that family or something, right? And so we'll still do our best to meet their needs virtually as well. So I do want to clarify that as well, that um, we, we may feel it would be great to have them in person. We could reach them a little easier, things like that. But, but there are other pieces to the calculus that families go through in making their decision. And so we also don't want to pressure them into feeling like the only way we can serve their child is if they come in person. We'll serve them virtually as well, in a case like that. Greg, were you gonna say something?
No, um, you guys covered it.
Yeah, good question. And I, and I think like, like what came up earlier about some of the work that's being done on these, with these, the Wednesday work that they're doing at both schools and just that analysis of kids who are struggling and getting extra supports in place, um, that will continue as we phase into this plan as well. I also want to share one more thing, because I don't want to leave here and, and not have said it, because we're, we have done our best throughout this process to be very transparent. And that is, um, for instance, with the, let's take the schedule that Greg presented.
So while Dr. Duty's frozen, I will
Kids that are moving in a cohort, but they've got four. Am I back?
Now you're back.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I just want to say, um, real quickly, that one, one of the situations we could run into is if a teacher um, tests positive, that they, um, as the classes rotate through and we go back and do the two-day look back, it's possible we could have to quarantine four classes, because that teacher had contact with four classes the day before they tested positive. So I just want to be clear that while we're doing our definition of quarantine the way we're doing it, we could continue to see large numbers of quarantining um, amongst, amongst the schools. And we want to make sure that people who are choosing in person are aware of that. Because it is quite possible that there could be a situation where your kid has to stay home. My kid was in one of those situations. I had to keep her home um, for, what was it, ten days or whatever? So um, that will happen if you choose in person. There is a very good chance you could end up having to quarantine, because we are being so careful with the, the numbers that we're quarantining. And Rochelle, I think you were, you were gonna share something too. All I was frozen. Do you want to go?
I was just gonna say, I said, um, the in-person proposals for Wednesdays. It's actually Tuesday and Thursday. Um, so that was all.
Awesome.
Could I follow up with one question? Um, and this is actually more or less what you were just addressing, David. Which is that, when we went back at, at the K through five, I, I think that there is some sense that because of all the cases, because of all the quarantine, you know, that was a problem for the plan. I kind of looked at it the other way, other way, which was that um, we were being so protective, the plan was working, and we were quarantining and keeping people safe. To me, that would change if you looked at it and said, we're spending so much time in quarantining, we're not actually being able to function in school. But I think the statistic uh, right now is that even with all the quarantining, we're still getting ninety percent of those who've opted for in-school at any one time, have been able to stay in school. So even with this broad quarantine rule, we are actually delivering in-person instruction to ninety percent of those. And we've done it so far uh, successfully without in-school transmission.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't say without in-school's transmission, because we do have two cases. We can't rule it out. But um, with very limited possibility at this point. And just to be clear, we are monitoring this to the student level, right? So we are looking with every single situation. So if we quarantine thirty-five kids, we are watching those thirty-five kids to see if anybody ends up coming down with the virus. So we are looking at this very carefully, because we do want to know if any of our mitigations are not working, um, or if we're seeing patterns and things that are happening. So just to clarify, yes, the high, the high numbers are a result of us being cautious, not a result of us being uncautious.
One other thing I wanted to add is that I appreciate your explanations for March eight. And I, I, you make a convincing case that that's the earliest date. I can still be disappointed, but, but I, I appreciate the, the reasoning behind it.
I do encourage people to um, check the, the dashboard frequently. The cases are dropping very quickly. They're still high, right? And there's, they're higher um, than we had seen for a while. But I do um, encourage you to check that. Um, we update it on a regular basis. I'm talking about the data dashboard with the COVID cases and things, as well as the reporting dashboard. Anything else we can cover for you?
I just want to say that Mr. Wiseman and I will be sending out an email communication tomorrow with links and reminders to go to our websites, to use all that information that we've put up there, so that you, everyone can make a good decision.
And I just want to say, that was the first time Rochelle ever called me Mr. Wiseman.
Thank you guys again for a great presentation. So um, now I guess we can move on to public comment. You said we have, how many do we have, David?
I see four signed up, and I think Shane was gonna take that over and run that for us.
And just so, um, while she's pulling that up, just a reminder, um, for your public comment, you have three minutes. If you could let us know, uh, give us your full name and let us know how you're associated with the school district. And if you could keep your comments more broad and not specifically pointing out any issues that you may have with a, a, a person and um, specifically, that can be done um, offline. Um, don't want to silence your voice. It just needs to be done in a different format. So we look forward to hearing um, what you would like to share with us.
Okay, first up today is Ms. Susan Camp. Susan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Thank you. My name is Susan Camp. And um, I am a parent to two children at Claremont Elementary School. And I'm writing with concerns about the budget. I saw that the original budget proposal um, put our reserves at a, at one point eight percent, which is very troubling as far as the financial security um, of this district goes. And I spent a couple of weeks analyzing that budget and um, questioning like line items and wondering, you know, what this meant for the future of our district. And I understand that um, not adequately funding our reserves means that um, our bond rating is at risk of being lowered. That would cost taxpayers a lot more money in the long run. But what I find most troubling right now is that um, in preparing an op-ed for Decaturish with regards to what I see um, as troublesome with regards to our financial security, I see that um, the agenda for the Board of Education meeting wasn't posted yesterday. In fact, it wasn't posted until I raised it with uh, Central Office. And then even then, it didn't include the financial documents you guys are set to discuss. And now, while I'm frantically looking through this uh, massive information overload that was not there twenty-four hours ago, I find it miraculous that our fund balance went from one point eight percent to ten percent. And I um, will definitely be diving more into that. Um, I don't expect the Board of Education to comment on the five federal impending lawsuits. I've sent you all my email. You know where I stand on that. But I speak just to raise this to public awareness that we need to be looking closely at our budgets and we need to be considering how these lawsuits are gonna impact that and taxpayers uh, down the line. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shayna, who's our next com- commenter?
Next commenter is Kunle Oganyi.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you. Thank you very much. And uh, thank you to uh, Ms. Rochelle and Mr. Wiseman for your plans, reopening plans. Very excited about that and hopeful that we will be able to go back to school tomorrow rather than later. I am a parent of two children in the city schools of Decatur, one at Renfro, one at uh, Decatur High School. But I'm speaking in regards to equity. And uh, the, the, I am asking that the district establish an office of, an office of family support, of family engagement to support the work of equity. We have a scenario where there are two Decators. There's a very sophisticated Decator and there's a Decator that is maybe not as sophisticated as uh, very well-educated families. And we need to find a way as a school district to connect with families that maybe don't have the levels of sophistication that we think are standard. Not everybody works in front of a laptop all day. There are a lot of households where that is not happening. And when our communication is only via email and electronic, we are losing a lot of uh, parents. We have to take into account the language we use in communicating. A lot of families that are intimidated by the school system. Now, just giving a couple of examples today. In this presentation, I heard the use of the word synchronous and asynchronous connections. These, these words are, are very bold, very audacious words um, that a lot of people may not understand. If you're trying to stay in touch with your child's learning and everything is and everything is um, is on, excuse me, I don't Sorry about that, folks. So anyway, we need to establish an office of family support. And we need to find, we need to find a way to, to fund that. And I'm, I'm recommending, we don't break the bank. We, we know budget is a concern. Even if we start with a part-time position, it will help. Something I heard today that was really nice, the ECLC Family Leadership Workshop. That's the sort of program that can be expanded. It shouldn't even be left to just the preschoolers or the early uh, childhood learners. A lot of parents that it could, it could support along the way. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kunle. Our next speaker, Shayna?
The next speaker is April Biajoni. April?
Hi there. My name is April Biajoni. I have three uh, sons in city schools of Decatur. And I would just like to start off by um, just stating the obvious. The obvious note that all of you are virtual right now. And uh, it's my understanding that this is because the Wilson Center is closed until next week due to the number of um, positive cases and exposures. And that's a relatively small building, yet four people have tested positive there alone um, since it opened and have had seventeen in quarantine. And so I heard something mentioned earlier, and I just want to say, we are in quarantine because of exposure, not because we're being careful. And I don't think it's accurate for that narrative to continue, um, because I've heard it several times in meetings that um, people have said, administration have said, that the number is low or the numbers are going down compared to how many students are in the building. Well, if we don't know how many are asymptomatic, because we're not testing. So, I mean, I just think that we need to be careful with the language that we're using surrounding this, because um, you know, if we're not testing, we don't know what the actual true numbers are. So, and just three days ago, Georgia had the deadliest day so far with a hundred and seventy-eight confirmed deaths. And if Georgia were its own country, it would have the eighth highest death rate in the world. So I don't want us to placate this virus and the severity of it right now in Georgia. I think it's also important to note that the city schools of Decatur's reopening plan wasn't designed for conditions where one in twenty people have had a COVID infection. And it certainly wasn't designed to deal with B117, which is the new variant. I think, given the high rate of COVID in this community, we're putting all of our faith in our mitigation strategies being effective. And if we just don't know how much prior data, primarily from Daniel Benjamin's data set from Duke and the ABC Science Collaborative, we can't accurately predict what will happen under our current much deteriorated conditions. And this is particularly distressing when we're on the brink of having a very highly effective vaccine deployed and teachers and school staff should have vaccinations before we pursue reopening more schools and having more kids exposed in our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Our next speaker, Shannon?
Next up is Meredith Yancy. Ms. Yancy?
Hi, my name is Meredith Yancy. I have a daughter at Fave and I have a son at Westchester. And I want to thank you for safely allowing the elementary school kids to go back to And I want to thank you for safely allowing the elementary school kids to go back to school. It has made a huge difference for my children, both their education and their mental health. They aren't doing great, but they are doing okay, which is so much better than they were doing before. I look forward to the opportunity for the middle school and high school children to go back as well. I know what a difference it makes, not just for education, but for mental health as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Meredith. All right, who's next, Shayna?
Okay, next up is Courtney Soleing. Okay. Courtney?
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Hi, I'm Courtney Solee. I'm a parent of four children in four different CSD schools. And we have one at Rimpro, Tally, Winona, and College Heights. And I signed on tonight, as I've listened to all year long, to learn more about the reopening plans and what the school board is doing and the differences between the in-person and the virtual options for my family. My lower elementary school students have remained virtual and have changed teachers and are now in class sizes of nearly 30 students. They have larger quote-unquote "small groups" and have less access to um to their teacher because of their class sizes. And their teachers are wonderful. We've been happy with the changes, that, you know, teachers are doing the best that they can. But the class sizes are um, you know, are very large. And I've just listened to the middle school plan. And although I really appreciate the thoroughness and the thoughtfulness and I'm happy to see that Wellness Wednesdays or some version of that is going to uh remain. I am concerned that, once again, it seems like virtual kids are getting less time with their teachers. Um, maybe this is a simple answer that could be uh given after a public comment, but it seems that in-person students have live instruction with their core teachers for 75 minutes, while virtual students will have 45 minutes of live instruction and 45 minutes of asynchronous. So even though virtual students are getting 90 minutes, 45 minutes of that time is not with their teacher. Research does show that it takes less time for students um to master a skill when they don't have the social distractions. But that being said, it does matter that they have access to their teachers. I know teachers need planning time. However, I hope that some of those planning sessions would be used to help um kids who are struggling um in their core subjects. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. And this is our last caller, um Shayna?
Yes, next, but no, we have one more, Manuel Morris. Okay, I'm not finding Manuel.
Are you looking at? It says Call Morris under the name. K-H-A-L.
I'm not finding a Morris. No. So we can move on?
Great, thank you, Shayna.
Um, is it possible, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, so we may have to to come back to it, but is it possible, I believe you and I, David, have spoken about um some of the virtual classes that um have a bigger size? And so can you kind of talk about the how that's being handled every day?
Yeah, absolutely. And so if you want to just jump into superintendent's comment, that's part of what I was gonna address. So is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Um, so I'll start with that one, since uh since it came up. Um, the, I guess I'll just go in reverse order. The the last um concern I heard about the RMS plan was that the students who are virtual um getting less access to their teacher. I know Greg had to jump off, so I'll go ahead and answer that one. And that is um the time, the access to the teacher is fairly similar in both plans. Um, the difference is that when you're in person, your access to the teacher is it's varying as you go, right? Like a teacher may give you something to work on and you're doing that independently. Um, whereas on the virtual, they tried to group that together um so that that independent work is done separately. The teacher is still available to communicate with the kids as needed. Um, so I know on the schedule it may look different, but it's just how things are structured differently in an in-person classroom versus a a virtual classroom. Um, and I do encourage them to reach out to Greg if they want more details on that, but that's kind of what's going on there. For the class sizes, which you just brought up, Pasha, um if anybody wants to look at class sizes, we do have it on our COVID FAQ. So if you go to our homepage under the COVID-19 menu, COVID FAQ right now, it's the final question. And there's a document there available that shows how we've broken down. Um, so while the classes themselves are a little larger in the virtual setting, um, and they do meet as a larger class periodically, depending on the structure of the school. But for the most part, they do meet as a larger group, like to build community amongst the class. Um, but then they also have a lot of support from other certified teachers where they can break out into groups, um smaller groups for the more individualized instruction. So if anybody wants to see what those ratios are, um as of, um, let's see, we updated it today. So if they want to check those ratios, I think you'll see that they're actually very similar um in-person and virtual. Um, like I said earlier tonight, um kids don't come in nice neat little packages, so you will see variation uh from school to school. The smaller the school, the more likely you're gonna have variation from grade to grade and the more likely it's gonna be different from other schools. Because when you have fewer students, um if you have more variability in what the groupings look like. So um I hope people will look at that data and if they have concerns about that, to reach out to the principal. Our principals have a lot of uh information on what they can explain for um what's happening in any specific classroom. So I encourage them to do that as well. And a lot of the schools have shared that information as well. Um, I'm glad one of the speakers brought up Wilson Center, because I meant to bring that up earlier. Um, so I did close Wilson Center through the end of the um week. And the reason it's not because of the number of cases, it's because we need time to determine if two cases were related and if they were, um, what happened, right? Was there a problem with our mitigations? And so they are correct that we have shut down Wilson Center and moved things virtual um for the time being. Um, I'd like to find out more about the uh concern with the board meeting not published. So we'll reach out to that person, because the board meeting was published. It was published, um, I think, Sunday. Um, and so I'm not sure what the concern was there. Um, I do want to address, um, it is really hard to keep track of our budgets. And I understand, I I really encourage people to listen to the recordings of our board meetings and not just look at the documents, um, because we do go into a lot more detail um in the recordings of what exactly we're looking at. So for instance, the 1.9 unspent balance um was the worst-case scenario first budget um and it has has changed considerably since then. Um, so, and I think um this would probably be a good topic um for one of our mini videos that we're starting to do. So I'll put together a mini video about budget, um, so we can try to explain that a little better. Um, but it is a lot to keep track of, and I totally agree with that. Um, of one of my, from one of my comments tonight, I want to um quickly share some exciting news, because it's been a while in the making. Let me pull this up real quick, just a second. And that is our equity website. Um, can you guys see that? Am I sharing it correctly? Um, and so this is, um, I'll I'll point out, uh, most of it's done. Some of it is still a work in progress. But as you guys know, we have been working a long time to try to do a better job of communicating our equity work. And so um Mary Banks and Sarah Jones and some other folks have been working together. I think Kunle gave some input on the equity website, if I'm not mistaken. Um, there there have been a lot of folks working to put together what is the equity story in City Schools of Decatur. So I'm just going to give you a high-level overview. There's a lot of content here and I encourage you to go take a look at it.
David?
For this.
Do you need to, on my screen, it's not showing as of, like, do you need to hit the maximize the window button?
Um, I can try. That be better?
Now, the the photos at the bottom are are on my screen are cut in half. I just thought I'd ask.
Not sure what's going on. I apologize.
Forget about it. Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's okay. Um, the, um, so let me go through a quick high-level overview. You can get to this from our webpage if you want to go through in in more detail. Um, so um, one thing that I hear a lot about is that we need ways for people to share their equity concerns and things like that. And we've actually had these for quite a while. Um, so I just want to point out, um, this is, there's a nice quick link there of how you can share um ideas and concerns. And Dr. Banks is really good at getting back to people on those things. We also have an anonymous page where you can submit things anonymously that you want us to look into, but you don't feel comfortable um sharing your identity. And those have been around for for a while and we encourage people to use those. Um, how did CSD get here? So this is the story of right from the start, when we first, back in 2015, 2016, started talking about equity data and it kind of walks you through the story of our equity plan. Again, I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. What is the equity plan? Um, one of the things we hear is it's really difficult to digest the equity plan. So we have a couple different layers of um understanding of the equity plan here. So we have this high-level um view of normalizing, organizing, and operationalizing um and what those things look like. They have put together a user-friendly equity action plan that just kind of simplifies things down a little bit more so you can see um where we are with different things and what kind of strategies we're taking on. And then, of course, you have the full equity action plan, which you guys have seen before. This is for people who just really want detail, right? They want to know every single thing, when it's happening, where it's happening, et cetera. Um, so that's still available as well. I don't, can you see those when I pull those up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. So it's sharing the whole window. That's good. Um, and again, it goes into some more information about each of those things. Equity resources are very helpful. So if a teacher is looking for equity resources, there's a whole list of information here that they may find helpful. Um, if a parent is looking for equity resources, oh, that goes to teacher. We'll have to fix that one. Um, and then, oh, here we go, equity resources for home. So if a parent is interested in more information that they can use with their own family, and then we also have equity resources by topic. And so all of these things are still getting built out, but there's a lot of it that's already there. The equity dashboard is not actually live yet. Um, this is a mock-up. We're working with a company called Monogram to get this in place. But this is just to give you a feel for the kind of things that um we're going to try to be presenting. So these are not our data yet. These are mock data. Um, and so we have a big draft stamp over there, but if you want to take a look at that, you can see the direction we're going. And hopefully we'll have that up pretty soon. The go over here. Okay, we also have FAQs about equity. And so you can go through, as we hear questions that tend to come up more often, we put them there. You can also see we have our responses to questions that where we've received from stakeholder groups. What did they ask us to do and what's our progress on it? What did we say we were doing and what are we doing? Think if I remember right, there's one more. Oh, yeah, the Equity in Action is on the far right there. Sorry, I can't get it. And this is where they periodically post new stories about things that are happening in our school district, um, where you can actually see equity in action. So I'm really excited for this. I just really appreciate all the work that went into it. It'll be a a living document. As you look at it, if you have feedback, please let me or Dr. Banks or uh Sarah Jones know um what your feedback is. We're happy to keep um expanding it and making it better. But I'm really excited that we've made this this leap. So any questions or comments before I leave that? Right, so um do take a look at it when you get a chance and I'll I'll send you the direct link as well, so you can uh go visit that as well. I think I think those are all my notes of things that I wanted to make sure to cover.
Thank you so much, David. That um website is great. Um, I'm looking forward to kind of digging digging in there. And also, I'd like that we now have a place to to send people when they do ask us questions. Um, we have a one targeted place they can go. And I especially love the um option to anonymous anonymously um present um an issue. So um those are all um really great. So thank you for putting that. So now it's time for board chair comments. My very first ones, I'm a little nervous. But um, so uh for my first official board comments, um, what I wanted to do, something a little different, that's to address the comments to the community and to acknowledge, first of all, um, what a very unique place that we're in. Um, and how we are, we are struggling. As parents, we're struggling. Um, as educators, as board members, um, our children, we are all in this place of struggling. And so many of us are also seeing divisions, um, not just the divisions that we see between um between politi- politicians and politics, but also between your friends and between your neighbors. I mean, this is just such a widespread um issue. And I want to try and see how we can bring it back locally. There's only so much we can do, right? But as a community, what can we do together to try to get back to that place? Um, so over the next year, I was kind of hoping that I would focus, um, ideally on healing. Um, that just seems to be um the word that keeps coming back. Um, and if we are truly here to do what's best for our kids, the only way we're gonna be able to do that is if we heal first. We ca- we won't be able to show up for our kids if we're broken. And so we have to heal. Um, and then what does that look like? And so for this first month, I uh wanted to just kind of talk about communication and how do we heal through our communication? Um, if you haven't seen the video yet, um, Dr. Duty sent out a a short video yesterday, a little informational video talking about um COVID testing and rapid testing. And the goal will be that those will be pretty frequent and they they may come from him. They may come from one of our board members, maybe one of his cabinet team members. But um just another way to connect with each other, that sometimes a newsletter just doesn't do it. Um, and so being able to hear from your leaders in the in 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 your community and in the school system, hear our voice, hear our heart. A lot of times you can't hear our heart in text. And so I think these videos will be very helpful um for you to just know what's going on, kind of a a quick check-in while you're sitting in line somewhere. Um, and hopefully they'll be on subjects that are important to you, because that's the goal. Um, and the newsletters, of course, will continue to go out as well. Um, and I encourage you to also, you know, email us, csd@decatur.net to, if you have other ideas, ideas and solutions on best ways that we can communicate to you, how would you receive the way that we communicate to you best? Um, the other part of it is that I encourage the community to also um start leaning in instead of calling out. I think we've been in such a space where we are gotcha and I'm gonna get them and um calling each other out. And it has been so divisive and unhealthy. And so I encourage the community to start leaning in. I also would love for us to start explaining our frustrations and explaining our anger versus expressing it. Because when we express it, it almost feels like we just want to be in an argument. We just want to keep it up here at 100. And I think the the biggest thing I've learned since we've been in COVID is that everything is at 100 and we cannot sustain mentally and physically at 100. We're just not made that way. And so if you take a moment to breathe and explain your frustrations, then it comes from a place of solutions. And that's what we need is solutions. So I think that together, I mean, that's the only way this is gonna happen, but it starts with us. And so I encourage you again to email if you have any other um ways that you feel like we can connect on a on on a more transparent basis. We have our, you know, all of the dashboards of the equity website was just a perfect lead into what I was thinking as far as sharing with our um with our community what's going on, as well as the videos. Um, and let's just do this, do this for our kids, um, because they are watching us. They're watching how we handle conflict and how we handle stress. And they aren't able to do some of the outlets that we are doing. And we all know what some of those outlets probably have increased since COVID. And they are unable to do some of those outlets. And so their outlets are gonna be different. And so they're watching how we handle things. They're they're watching how we approach things. They're watching how we And so they're watching how we handle things or they're watching how we approach things. They're watching how we, we. We come to something that we may not agree with. How do we approach that? They're watching how we do it. So let's show them that even though we're in a pandemic and even though this really, all of this sucks. But how do we show up for each other? Let's go back to assuming the best intentions. We've got to get there, guys. It really does hurt my heart when I see comments that say. The board just doesn't care. That's why they're doing this. They just don't care. And I wish you could hear me when I say that, just absolutely the farthest from the truth. I'm not always going to make a decision and my board is not always going to make a decision that you're going to like. But it's always going to come from a place of all angles. A lot of conversation and sometimes sleepless nights. Trying to figure out the best course of action for all our kids. So. I, um, I know it's a little cheesy, but remember when we used to all have community circle before COVID? And it was, we used to say at college heights, it's love that builds community. And it's us that builds community. Okay, it's cheesy, I know, but. That is really at the core of who we are. And when we used to have our kids at college heights, you cannot tell me you didn't look forward to singing that song. I know I did, or my, my daughter would make me sing it with her. And so. Unfortunately, we're not all together. We can't all sing that song right now, but we can remember, we can remember. What you used to love about the city of Decatur, what you used to love about the school system. What were the things that brought you here and kept you here? And there is a way that we can get back to that. I know that there is. We just all have to do it together. And especially during this time that we're hurting. Over the loss of Nicole Pritchett. It's. Intermountable. This again is not a time. For us to fight over that. This is a time for us to come together over that. I know that she would want that. Her family doesn't want to see us all fighting over her death. But figuring out how her death can bring us back together. So. I will end at that because I can talk a really long time if you let me. So. But I appreciate your time. I appreciate. My board giving me. Giving me the opportunity to sit in this space is truly an opportunity. And so I thank you for that. I thank you for trusting me. And I look forward to, to, to helping us get to this place as best as I can. Thank you, guys. Okay. Oh yeah, I'm supposed to go next. Wait, what's next? Alrighty, so now.
Does anyone else have the, it's love that builds community song stuck in their head now? Cause I know I do.
Exactly. That was the point, right?
Yes, exactly. I love it.
Alright, so let's moving on to consent items. We have the personnel report, school nutrition, financial report and the budget. Alright.
And just to clarify, it's the budget amendment.
Oh, the budget amendment. Okay, alright. And is any of, do we need to pull any of that out for discussion? Anyone? Okay, so, um, alright, help me out, David. What do I say next?
So we can just say for consent, we can say all in favor.
Also for consent, all in favor, say aye, or thumbs up?
Aye.
Alright, perfect. Thanks, guys. Alright, so the next items for action and information. Will be the FY 2022 budget that we're going to talk about. Go ahead, David.
Alright, thank you very much. So I'm going to turn it over to Lanita Broom, our CFO, and she's going to walk us through the 2022 budget. You may see lots of things that look similar and then you'll also see things that have been. Improved since our last discussion. So she'll walk you through that. Again, if you're, if it's possible for you to hold your questions until she's finished, that may be most efficient. But feel free if you need to jump in on something, of course, do that. Otherwise, we'll be happy to answer questions at the end.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Duty, community colleagues. This evening, we are going to review various factors to consider as we continue our development of the fiscal year 22 budget. Starting with the budget calendar. Next slide. This evening is the fourth public budget discussion the board has had regarding the fiscal year 22 budget. The budget was discussed previously at the January 7th work session. The January 12th board meeting and the January 27th work session. We are still in the preliminary stages of developing the budget and we will continue budget discussions. Including setting and adopting a tentative property tax military in June. Okay. To fund balance, okay? This slide lists the actual fund balance percentage of annual budgeted expenditures from 2009 to 2019. 2020 fund balance percentage represents the unadded fund balance. And fiscal year 2021, which is the current fiscal year, represents the projected fund balance. From 2009 to 2019, the fund balance projected percentage has been significantly lower than the final fund balance. This is mainly due to savings from vacant positions and operational budgeted funds that were unspent. Next is the military rate. This slide shows the military rate history from 2010 to present. The military rate fluctuates based on the economy and the needs of the district. The Board of Education sets the military rate annually. In the last 10 years, the highest military rate was 20.90 from 2012 through 2014. Next slide is legislative priorities. We have legislative priorities for the current fiscal year 21 budget and for next year's fiscal year 22 budget. For the current budget, the Georgia House approved House Bill 80. Which is an amended budget that restores 60% of austerity cuts to the current fiscal year 21 budget. This means that of the 3.3 million that was initially cut from the 10% austerity reduction. The House has approved for 1.9 million to be restored in the current budget. The next step for House Bill 60 is for the Senate to approve. The Senate is scheduled to begin considering the budget this Friday. Also for the current budget, the governor is recommending a one-time $1,000 bonus payment. To all school teachers and school level staff members. Including bus drivers, clerical staff, principals, counselors and school nutrition workers. The 1,000 can only be used to fund the bonus payment. And the funds will come from the governor's office and the Georgia Department of Education. In preparation for next year's fiscal year 22 budget, the House is proposing. Proposing that the 60% or 1.9 million in austerity cuts be restored to this budget also. Additionally, for fiscal year 22, the House is proposing to hold district harmless for decreased enrollment by not reducing the QBE funding. The third addition to fiscal year 22 legislative priorities is Senate Bill 59. This is a new bill that was just introduced this month. And is proposed to reduce charter system supplements by reducing earnings. For each four-time equivalent student from 3.8% to 3%. This will reduce our state funded by approximately $127,000. The Senate's logic for this bill is to reallocate funds from charter systems to charter schools. And this is in the early stage, so it's the beginning of the proposal. The next slide represents your amended current budget and your preliminary fiscal year 22 budget. With projected preliminary budgets through 2025. In the first column, you have your current cares amended three for fiscal year 21 budget. This is your current budget, which has been amended to include the 60% restoration of austerity. This is shown under austerity reductions. Previously, the amount listed for austerity reduction was 3.3 million. However, since approximately 60% or 1.9 million is likely to be restored as discussed on the last slide. The budget shows the 40% or 1.3 million of austerity cuts that will remain. Notable expenditure changes in your current fiscal year 21 budget. Includes increases in the salary and benefits lines. As a result of learning paths and school health aids as listed in Amendment 3. There's a decrease in supplies and equipment of $1 billion as a result of reallocating COVID-related expenditures. From the general fund budget to the federal grants. The cost for the district to provide COVID testing to staff and students is also included in the supplies and equipment line. The current's budget military rate is 20.25. And the projected ending fund balance for the current budget is 9.6%. Which is within the 4 to 15% district targeted military. Now for each of the years, we have targeted the minimum fund balance goal of 10%. To cover the district for one month of operation. Plus this allows an additional two plus million for emergency purchases if needed. And blue at the bottom, I have highlighted the projected possible loss of revenue. As a result of the current senior homestead exemption. Be mindful that the numbers highlighted in blue are preliminary only and projected. Based on the current senior homestead exemption average increase from 2007 to present. The modified senior homestead exemption that the Board of Education approved in December. Must be passed by the Georgia Legislature and approved by voters in November 2021. And if approved, will go into effect for next year's 2022 budget. So the numbers that you see for the preliminary budget for fiscal year 22 are based on the current senior exemption. Your second column is your preliminary fiscal year 22 budget. Projected property taxes are based on a military rate of 24.50. Which is an increase of 4.25 of the current military rate as shown below highlighted in yellow. A military rate of 24.50 will allow the district to maintain the 10% fund balance percentage. Projected property tax for fiscal year 22 are based on, again, the current senior homestead exemption. And not the proposed modified senior homestead exemption. Next you see tuition revenue up under major revenue source. This is based off of current enrollment of all tuition paying programs. And does not take into account potential revenue if the board decides to accept tuition from non-resident students. Other local revenue. Consists of miscellaneous revenue obtained from various sources such as surplus sale of property. Earning on investment and facility rentals. Your enrollment numbers are, your enrollment projections are listed up top in yellow. Enrollment numbers for fiscal year 22 are anticipated to increase back to the original fiscal year 21 enrollment numbers. Which will not decrease or increase QBE funding. It will remain pretty much the same. Your local fair share is the amount of funds that are deducted from the QBE. Due to the state mandate for school districts to use a minimum of five meals of their local funds. The five meal calculation is a percentage of property tax, which explains why the localized fair share amount increases for fiscal year 22. The austerity reduction reflects the 40% or 1.3 million cut in QBE. Left after restoring 60% or 1.9 million of the austerity cuts. The state line under major revenue sources. Represents funds received from state grants such as CTAE and JTROC program. You will notice that the from fund balance line indicates what amount of funds need to be used from the fund balance to balance the budget. For fiscal year 22, there's a negative $506,606. Negative in this line means this is the amount of surplus funds that will go back to the fund balance. If you look at the bottom of the fiscal year 22 column. You will see that the beginning fund balance is projected to be 8.1. And the end of fund balance is projected to be 8.6. The end of fund balance is higher than the beginning fund balance due to the $506,606 surplus funds. The 8.6 million is the amount required in fund balance to maintain a 10% fund balance. For fiscal year 22, major expenditure categories. There are increases in salaries and supplies that include remediation programs. That were discussed in the previous budget meetings. The remediation programs include intervention, summer school for all grade levels. Extended day tutoring, intensive break program, hiring a remedial program manager. And the biggest expense is related to reducing class size by adding 21 teachers. Additional increases in salary and benefits expenditures include staff increases. 2% cost of living increases. Benefits increases include 0.75% increase in TRS. A 2% increase from all other expenditures lines from the current fiscal year to fiscal year 22 is also included. And each of the major expenditure categories to account for inflation. In order to maintain a fund balance around 10%, the military rate would need to be increased to 24.50. With the current senior homestead exemption. Revenue loss from the current homestead exemption is projected to be approximately 6.5 million. Future years, the future years budget throughout 2025 followed the same format of the fiscal year 22 budget. And that property tax projections are based on maintaining a 10% fund balance. You will see that the military rate. Down at the bottom, highlighted in yellow. It decreases each year. Then you have your tuition, which again is based on current enrollment. Or current students paying tuition. The 40% austerity cuts are included. QBE funds increase as student enrollment increases. Local fair share, which is a percentage of property tax increases as revenue received from property taxes increase. The amount from fund balance continues to be a surplus, which is added to your ending fund balance. For the future years budget through fiscal year 25, major expenditure categories. Expenditures increase in salary and benefits include staff increases. Benefit increases and cost of living adjustments. Expenses continue to take inflation into consideration and increases by 2% each year. Remediation programs are included in a phased out or modified approach throughout the future budgets. Okay, next we'll go to your fiscal year 22 budget assumptions. Many of the assumptions were discussed in the previous slide. In the amendment of the current budget and development of the fiscal year 22 through fiscal year 25 budget. Austerity costs were partially restored at 60%. Property tax projections were based on Georgia State University forecast. Each of the fiscal years utilize the current senior exemption and not the proposed modified senior exemption. All one-time amendments related to COVID have been removed from fiscal year 22 preliminary budget. 0.75% increase to TRS is included in fiscal year 22 and all future budgets. Enrollment projections are based on enrollment projections reported by cooperative strategies. Remediation programs have been included in the fiscal year 22 budget and all future budgets. Staff increases and 2% cost of living adjustments are included in all budget. The proposed military rate changes to maintain a fund balance of 10%. Next, we have staffing considerations. These positions are not included in the budget that we just went over. In order to operate more effectively and efficiently, the following staffing needs are being requested. Health PE teacher at Decatur High School. Upgrade of senior accounting specialist to coordinator to match the job level of responsibility. Upgrade accounting specialist to accounts pay specialist. Accounts payable specialist to handle the prompt payment of all district invoices. Accounting specialist, which will be a new position to manage and monitor position control and various accounting responsibilities. Upgrade admin- administrative assistants to HR specialist one to match the current job responsibility. The total fiscal impact is approximately 172,000. The total fiscal impact is approximately one hundred and seventy two thousand annually. And this cost is again not included in the fiscal year twenty two preliminary budget. Budget consideration for decreasing expenditures, you all have seen this before. Includes reducing operational budgets, which could result in savings up to one point four million. Implementing a tier approach for families to pay for AP and IP exams could reduce expenses by approximately one hundred and twenty five thousand. Budget consideration for increasing revenue, increasing mileage rates as described in the summary of your preliminary budget. Accept tuition for non-resident students. And Dr. Duty, do you want to go into any details on the Decatur Virtual Academy?
I I'm making some notes, I'll go into when you're done.
Okay. So next slide, board budget updates to the current budget. And then legislative update summary, we discussed the one thousand bonus that the State Board of Education was scheduled to vote on for school site personnel. And last month's budget presentation, one hundred and forty three thousand was listed as the amount that would be needed from general fund. For those employees not assigned to a school site. We have recently received communication from the Department of Early Care and Learning. That they will fund one thousand bonuses, one thousand dollar bonuses for pre-K teachers and workers. As a result, the amount that will be needed from general fund to provide one thousand dollar bonuses. To all other employees not assigned to school site has decreased to eighty one thousand. And this is not included in your fiscal year twenty two preliminary budget. Budget challenges are the same as referenced last month. Although the sixty percent restoration of austerity cuts is proposed, it has not been approved by the Senate yet. Budget amendments are still being requested for COVID-related expenses, which have had a direct impact on the district's fund balance. Although there is discussions on how public schools, although there have been discussions on how public schools will be funded for fiscal year twenty two. There have been no decisions. And of course, the biggest challenge is operating in a pandemic and not being able to project what future expenses may be necessary. To protect the well-being of staff and students. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Lenita. I've got a couple of things I want to share real quickly. One, just a reminder that with the fund balance graph you saw early on about how it was in the twenty percents. And then we're going to ten percent, just a reminder that is a reflection of that change. That we implemented over the last couple of years to aim for ten percent of of an unspent balance. I I just want to make a comment about the thousand dollar for all thing. It's great that they included pre-K, by the way, which thank you for capturing that in the presentation, Lenita. The I just saw, and I think it was maybe WSB News or something, Marietta have, there was a whole story about them also. Trying to pass on the thousand dollars to the staff who wouldn't otherwise get it. So I wasn't surprised that we're in, we're having the same conversation here. And I'm glad that they're doing that as well. On the multi-year projection, I just want to emphasize again, a couple of things. One, we're not recommending those mileage rates. That's another example of the change of how we're approaching budgeting. And so remember what we used to do is keep the mileage rate constant. And and make the unspent balance be the piece that fluctuates for whatever the needs are. And what we've been trying to do lately is keep the unspent balance constant. And fluctuate the mileage rate if you need to. And so that's, those projections are really a worst case scenario. What we still need to do, we need more time to reflect the accurate. Impact of the changes to the senior homestead exemption. And so in our next version, we will try to have that better implemented there. And so I just want to make sure you understand that's kind of a, that's kind of a worst case, and we are not recommending those mileage rates. I want to make sure that that's clear. This is just part of the planning process, to trying to figure out where the fences are between which we're going to try to operate and stay. Couple other things I want to mention, just a reminder, special ed staffing is one of those things that can really fluctuate. Because it's very much determined by every single child's IEP. And so there may be, even as we go through this process, we may get an approved budget and then have to come back to you. As we learn of changes to students' IEPs or new students who move in with IEPs. That's just a reminder, that's one of those things that fluctuates and and sometimes it can be difficult to predict. Because you don't necessarily know what students you're going to have or what their IEP teams are going to decide. So just a reminder. In case we do get to the point we have an approved budget and we have to come back to you to make some accommodations for the special ed staffing. The finance and HR staffing requests, you may recall, we've been working on making those departments more efficient and effective. And those are reflective of some of those changes that we're trying to do in those departments to make sure that we're serving our stakeholders. And especially our employees as well as we can. So that's what those are reflective of. We still need to get to you a more detailed plan on the AP and IB testing. And so we shared that we would look in that a little further following your last comments, and we did not have a chance to get that completed yet. So I want to make sure you know that will still be coming. We are also waiting to hear back from the Georgia Virtual School. About the potential of maybe partnering with them for a virtual academy in Decatur. And what that might look like. So we just want to know what our options are. And obviously, depending on what that model looks like, not knowing how many people would want that option. Really can make that cost fluctuate considerably. So hopefully by the next time we come back, we will have some more details that we'll be able to present to you there. Once we've heard back from them. Yeah, those are the big things that I wanted to make sure we we touched on. We are, we also have a presentation to talk through some more details on remediation. Ideas and costs and plans and things, but I thought maybe we could cover questions from this part first. And then quickly Bean is going to jump on and walk through some of that remediation stuff with us. So. Any questions or comments with the presentation Lenita just gave?
Hey, Tasha. First, I want to thank Lenita for another excellent presentation. I find. Your reports and your explanation just be very, very clear. And so this is a very helpful budget and I really appreciate that. I also appreciate the way that y'all have presented the preliminary budgets going forward and fluctuating the. Milage rate, just to show that if you're going to keep your ten percent fund balance, this is what it's going to take. And I think that that's the right way to look at it. I don't like the the twenty four point five mileage, but but that's not what's going to happen. I wanted to make, but I like, I think this is the right way for us to look at budgets. I like what y'all are doing. I did want to make a comment on the homestead exemption that when you're forecasting forward. There's really no scenario in which the current exemption continues into fiscal year twenty two. And so really what we have is a choice between zero exemption whatsoever. Which means that we get all of that money back. Minus what you lose from pre-existing exemptions versus in the other scenario. Presumably the exemption that we've requested and hope to get passed. Through first the general assembly and then the preference, but these scenarios where we lose six and a half, seven and point three, eight. That's actually can't happen because of the sunset. And so for the.
That's exactly right. That's exactly.
Future versions, we might show a less scary version by having those other two alternatives instead of this one.
And and just to clarify, if in part of what we are hoping to do with the next version is right underneath that taxes line. You would have the senior exemption impact line. So you can see exactly what it is we're projecting and we are, this is what we're planning unless you'd like us to do it differently. We are planning to do the projections assuming that the legislation passes. With the new exemption, because I think that's the most likely scenario. And so that way we will be able to see it there in the lines. So that's what we plan to bring back next time.
It's the most conservative, because if it doesn't financially, we get more money. And so I think that's right. The only other comment I wanted to make was about the, well, maybe I had two comments, but one, I I still am just. I don't know where I, what I feel about the thousand dollar. Bonuses, you know, as we've discussed, as a rule, that's the wrong way to compensate people. You either adjust their. Salaries appropriately or not, but you don't get one-time bonuses. Very little bang to the buck in that way. And in this case, you have a bonus plan that was set up by the state. And the state made this choice to leave some people out. Whatever logic of that, I don't know, but it becomes an unfunded mandate if we're just going to cover everybody. And so. I'm really conflicted about it. It kind of depends on who's left out. So my question at this point is who's left out? Are we just covering some central office staff? Because I just be frank, I'd be cool to the idea. Of the bonus just for central office staff. I think for the reasons that the state. You know, arranged it the way it did. We should just take, take it up with the state.
Fully understand. We'll get, we'll get a list for the next presentation. We'll make sure to have a list that describes much better who. It must be eighty one people, who those eighty one people are.
Okay. And the my final comment is that in terms, I'm glad that the the mediations have been included in the budget. I think we should pursue all of the decreasing expenses options, although we can talk about the. I wondered if, you know, Mr. Gonyez's comment for the past two. Public comment periods about a director of pub, uh, family engagement to me seems like a very good idea. And I just wanted to. Sort of suggest that we give that real serious consideration. I don't know what the budget impact would be. But I thought.
So what I, what I prefer to do is come back at our next meeting and share with you what we do for family engagement. Because we do have folks who this is what they do. And so let me plan to do that. I do appreciate his ideas. He shared several of those. Recently and some of them before. And so let let me put together some information for you all. So you can make sure you understand what we do for family engagement currently. And then let's have the discussion if we want to do more than what that is.
That's that's perfect. I understand. Anyway, I just wanted to say that I like that.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all I've got.
I I I wanted to say and add that the. School budgets are, you need a degree to finally like get into them. And fully understand it's, it's no mistake that like when they do school board training, it's one day for everything else and one day for the budget. And I'm starting to hear a little bit of what Tasha identified as just people expressing. Expressing their anger, not the reason why they're angry or whatever here around budget stuff. And it's just sort of like. The narrative that the state took three point three million dollars of budget in the middle of a global pandemic and we decided. We're going to be, we're going to be okay with the fund balance continuing to fund teachers to move forward with this COVID. Mitigation efforts to continue to to fund the two thousand dollar stamps. We're not going to furlough anybody like. Like all of those meetings and that stuff was very important, but it does look scary when you do that. And then the way you presented board, we present budget where Lenita comes up and was like, this is the scary budget. This is the one, you know, and someone commented and said that, like, if you just found that one, you would be like, holy crap. Decatur is about to have to bankrupt. And so that narrative, I think, is is important to include in what in what we're doing that is. Oh, man. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty crazy out there for school budgets all across the state, which we've heard reports on. So and I'm glad, I guess the biggest update, and correct me if I'm wrong, between the first one and the last one, was that sixty percent putback of the austerity. That they took away. Is that, is that for sure happening?
I don't think it's for sure yet. It looks more certain every day. So I don't think it has actually been decided upon. But it it has not, to my knowledge, I have not seen any updates today. So if anything happened today, I wouldn't know it, but. I do not think it has actually been written in stone or changed to something different at this point.
Right, the the next step would be for the Senate to approve it.
Okay, but thank you, Lenita. Because that's the biggest change. I mean, the state just took three point three and. One point nine, it's hard to, it's hard to plan when people aren't paying their bills. Yeah. That's it.
I have a question to clarify, and I appreciate the comments around the senior tax exemption. And just trying to get a more accurate picture about what that's going to look like. But the current one, let's, I just want to talk through the timeline to understand. The current senior. Exemption will expire at the end of fiscal twenty twenty two's budget. Is that right?
No, it'll, it'll expire in the middle of the.
Middle.
Because it'll expire December thirty first of twenty one.
Okay.
It'll be the middle of the FY twenty two budget. Now, it gets further complicated because of when we book our revenues. So I don't know, Lenita, do you want to speak to that of? What impact that will have?
For fiscal year twenty two, it will have a minor impact because our largest amount of tax revenue is collected in the month of January. So there will be an increase from those that pay in installments. So when you look at the financial report that's provided, when you look at next month's financial report. You will see a large sum collected for property tax. And that's the payment that was due in December. So because.
When we, I'm sorry, Lenita, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say because the exemption expires at the end of December, it will miss the big collection. But you will still have those that pay in installments. And so we will get the revenue from those individuals.
So the the revenue that we book in January of twenty two. Will reflect the second installment that still included the full senior homestead exemption. Is that right? So it does get complicated, Heather, and we'll try to explain that better in the next presentation. Because it does get complicated as to when you'll actually see the impact.
Yeah.
Because it's not a month to month thing.
Yeah, my, so that that is helpful. And where I'm going with that is I'm just trying to understand. If there will be, and to what extent there will be an impact to the fiscal year twenty two.
So I think what we will see, let's, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lenita, but the first payment. In twenty twenty two will be booked in the FY twenty two budget. Is that correct, Lenita?
That's correct, but it'll be a smaller portion. We'll see the biggest, really, the big, the largest amount we'll see in. Twenty three, in January twenty three.
And is that Lenita? Because most people, if they, if they don't pay in installments, they typically only pay in December. Is that right?
Right. Well, they pay the biggest amount in December.
Yep. Because people want to hold on to their money as long as possible. And so we get more revenue with the December payment than we do in. The the one earlier in the year.
Right, that's usually from escrow, those that have their property taxes in escrow. That's when it'll pay out.
So we'll try to lay that out. We'll, we probably should devote a whole slide to it because it is very complicated. And we'll do our best to try to lay that out so it can be clear. But I think. I think we'll see kind of a, an in-between state in FY twenty two. And then we'll see the full impact of the change to the exemption in FY twenty three. But we will, we will try to lay that out. So it's much more clear.
Okay, that's helpful because FY twenty two was the year with the scary looking mileage rate.
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to understand if there's, like, what is that kind of gap year? Look like before we transition to the new adjust adjusted, hopefully approved. Tax exemption. And are we going to that year have to maybe. Make some interesting decisions there on fund balance versus mileage rate, knowing that we will be easing into a. You know, a state where that exemption will cost less going forward.
No, you hit the nail on the head. That's exactly what I anticipate. Like, we don't want the mileage rate to fluctuate wildly, right? And so it's quite possible that we will have that exact decision that will say, alright, let's let the fund balance go a little bit lower in twenty two. Because we know what's happening with the exemption so that we can keep the mileage rate more stable. That's exactly the conversation we need to have.
And the only other comment I will say is when we make a slide like that, I think it's worth writing on the slide. Just preliminary, preliminary, so that it doesn't, for when people do just go through the agenda that they don't. Kind of misinterpret what we're trying to do with that or trying to say by that. So that's all.
I agree.
But Lenita, thank you. I think your explanations are great and I appreciate you answering all of my tedious questions. And it it was very well spelled out. The two things I just want to say I appreciate very much that you've included are the step and cola increases each year. And particularly. The remediation being included and showing how that, you know, will be phased out. So thank you.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned the step and cola because I do want to make sure you all saw that because. We do want to get into that habit of doing the step and cola. And so for the projections, we did just automatically include what we have typically done, which is a step. And about a two percent cola. So I'm glad you pointed that out, Heather, because that is important to.
Thank you.
I didn't have any questions out. Lenita's explanation was really helpful for me. Um, I'm just interested in hearing more, David. You said you were gonna share. More about the AP and IB, uh, fees later.
So, yeah, and so that'll come at the next meeting because we did not have time to get into detail. Yeah. At the last meeting, we shared that we wanted to look more at like a sliding scale kind of idea. Um, and we just didn't have time to get to that. So we'll bring that at the next.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and all my questions were, were answered in the presentation and, and some that, um. Other board members asked, I was gonna mention the preliminary or draft or.
Yeah.
This isn't real or something on there. So.
We'll, we'll get better at that. I appreciate that feedback. I, I do think we need to remember that not everybody gets to see all of these. Throughout the process and all the discussions, so.
Right, and I mean, our numbers have gone down. I can see who's attended from earlier to just now. So they probably missed all of. Of that and then are gonna look and see those numbers and wonder, are we really going to twenty four, uh, military? So.
Well, and I've been jotting down notes here. I think I'll do a whole series of budget videos, right? Like here, here's, here's this little topic here, this little topic here. With little topic, I think that will be helpful. So. All right, good. So, um, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna invite Christie to talk us through the remediation pieces. Um, so you can see where we are with, with that. Christie, if you wanna jump in there. Oh, there she is. Are you able to share, share your screen, Christie, or do you need me to find it or?
I think so. Do you guys see that?
Yep.
Okay, um, so we've, we talked about this at the work session and we've worked through a few more details and. You know, these ideas came out of, um, ideas that were shared with the principals and what we thought would, um. You know, looking at where we are with our students, what we could do to get students back on track. The rationale is that we do anticipate an increase in numbers of students that require remediation. And we anticipate that, um, some students will have larger gaps in learning and need more intensive remediation. So. And looking how we can plan ahead for that and, um, you know, provide the most intensive, uh, remediation as soon as possible. To bring students back up to, um, you know, grade level or benchmark wherever, um, the help is needed. So some of the ideas, um, include, um, one that we think is incredibly important. It's just enhancing our standard intervention program during the day. So what we plan to do for that is just to increase. Um, the very strategic, so I'm gonna move you guys because everybody can see. The very strategic intentional data-driven district-wide interventions that we provide, but do even more targeted. Have the formalized pacing guides that we started this year. And have common assessments every six weeks so that we're ensuring that students are meeting the benchmarks. Early, we can remediate right away. Um, be sure those assessment results are tracked and analyzed at the school level and district level on the student level. So that, um, you know, the online, so that we're able to drill down and again, make sure right away that students that aren't meeting the benchmark are getting the help that they need. So this is, although this is happening now to enhance this, we would, um, be looking at a cost of about seventy five thousand dollars. And that would primarily be staffing for the summer work to finalize the pacing guides to create the common assessments. Also any additional subscriptions to online programs that would help us, um, that students would have access to at school and at home. So that we can, um, track students and provide those remedial services, um, right away in that environment. And. Then next is summer school, which we do already have at Decatur High School. The current practice is that students, um, that need credit recovery that have failed a course, they complete an online course at the school through eight. Well, at the school and home in combination, but they do have support at school. Teachers are available. They attend three hours a day, five days a week. For three weeks and the school typically serves approximately a hundred students per summer at a cost of twenty five thousand dollars. What we are recommending is that, um, in order to provide smaller groups for students so that they can get more intensive support. We are anticipating an increase in the number of students. So we are, um, planning for two hundred students. So doubling that number, uh, for four days a week. The purpose, um, is not only for credit recovery so that we're ensuring that the students pass the course. But if the students have any gaps in skills and need any remediation and reading and math, that we would provide that, um, in a small group setting for these students. So the cost of the additional, um, staffing and the course fees would be, um, an additional fifty thousand dollars. We're estimating. Currently, there is not summer school, um, at Rimpro Middle School. So we are recommending that we provide that support for students. That are not demonstrating mastery of standards, um, for their grade level. We are proposing that we provide targeted instruction three hours a day. Four days a week, um, to provide space for up to twenty percent of our students that may need remediation. That cost would be an additional seventy five thousand. We also, um, at this point do not have any summer program, um, for general education for our elementary schools. So we are recommending that we do provide that. Um, the, again, the support would be that. For students that are not mastering standards on grade level, we would provide three hours a day, three days a week for. Um, up to twenty percent of our students that may need remediation services and that cost would be a hundred thousand dollars. Because of, um, you know, there are more, more students in K five, um, than at the middle school or the high school. And then, um, also to provide smaller groups for more intensive services for the little ones. And, um, we would need probably at least two locations, we're thinking. And then Saturday school, Saturday school was a practice, um, at Decatur High School previously. Um, up until March twenty twenty, we want to expand the program to include K twelve. Um, and we would offer Saturday remediation to, which would be a type of a tutoring program, three hours a day on a Saturday. Offered every other Saturday for approximately twenty Saturdays throughout the year. The cost per one hundred students for twenty Saturdays. Primary costs are staffing and that would be, um, seventy five thousand dollars to create small groups for the students. And then, um, we, oops, excuse me, we currently have, oh my goodness, I'm so sorry. We currently have an extended day tutoring service. Um, in our elementary schools and city schools of Decatur. Um, this program is offered, it was expanded minimally. To six twelve this year. Um, this is generally for students that are, just need a little extra help. They don't usually qualify for. Additional services in the school day. So that's, that's the, the population that's generally been targeted. And, um, the previous budget for this program has been seventy five thousand dollars a year. We are suggesting that we double the capacity of the program. For an additional expense of seventy five thousand. And then, um, an intensive program for the break. So we have fall, winter and spring break. Currently, there are no remedial services during that time. We are suggesting that for students that demonstrate need. We provide targeted instruction for hours a day, four days a week, working on reading and math foundational skills. We had, what we had in mind was like a mini expedition or a mini unit inquiry. So it would be problem-based. It would be very engaging. And students would come, um, and, and get remediation in that kind of, um, critical thinking environment. So to serve a hundred students in that setting, the cost would be approximately fifteen thousand dollars per week or forty five thousand dollars annually. We do have a little bit of a, not a concern, but one of the challenges of this is that if we were to have to go outside of Decatur for staffing. Other school systems are having school at this time. So, um, you know, depending on the number of students staffing may. Maybe a concern for this one. Um, and then we are suggesting, so we had previously talked about reducing class size and, and the deeper we dug into that. We thought that, um, potentially the more bang for our buck would be to get, um, to level out. The ratio of student teacher support in all the schools throughout the district. So currently all schools do employ intervention teachers, either EIP teachers or REP teachers, um, as early intervention. Teachers to support students at tier two and tier three, um, are students that need tier two and tier three support for language arts, math. Or and or behavior support. And so if we were to hire an additional twenty one teachers in that capacity. We could equitably and effectively distribute those teachers across the school. So that we would provoke, be providing a student teacher ratio of about ten to one in pre-K through five and about fifteen to one in grade six through twelve. And that's the cost that Lenita mentioned, um, that would be about one point nine million dollars. And so, you know, this would be a very strategic hiring at each school, what exactly they need to. Create that small group so that every student is getting that intensive support, um, to see quick growth. And get on track. So here's a summary of that. And then, um, one final piece that is mentioned, as you can imagine, if we have Saturday programs going and we have evening programs going. And we have all the summer programs going and all these programs going, we need, um, someone to manage all those programs. So in addition to that, we would be looking at a position, um, to have someone manage all of these positions. They would really monitor closely student data. They would report out to myself and you and, um, the principals and, you know, help the teachers identify trends and needs. And, um, they would hot, help hire staff, supervise and coordinate all of these programs. So, and. Kunle act as apparently is on as well. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you, Christie. That's super helpful. I also want to point out, um, depending on the timing of some of these things, they may actually. For some of those things that are summer could potentially impact the FY twenty one budget. And so we will clarify some of those. Um, if you guys are in support of us continuing down this path, we'll get some more details in each of those. Of, um, which part of those expenses do we anticipate in the current year budget FY twenty one? Because they'll happen before June thirtieth and which would we anticipate in the FY twenty two budget? So I'd be interested if there's anything you see here that you, you don't, that you don't support. We'd like to hear that. We're excited about all of these different avenues of trying to try multiple different ways to reach students. And there may be many students that are served in multiple of these programs, right? It's not just you pick one or you get asked to be in one. And the other one doesn't apply. You may be asked to be in many of them depending on the needs and, and what it's serving. So. If there are thoughts about or concerns about the direction we're going with this, please let us know, um, so we can adjust accordingly. But, um, when we come back next time, we can share, um, for those that are still in the hopper, um, which, exactly which amount from which budget we're picking.
I love all of those ideas. I'm sorry, those. I love all of those ideas and, um. I think they'll be needed, you know, and I'm glad that it looks like we'll be in a position to be able to offer those services to our students after everything that's going on. And I don't know, Christie, if you had a chance to think this far here, but I was just wanna know that the DHS. Um, summer school has been typically for credit recovery. The RMS summer school with that, is that optional? Is that for students who I know in the past, if you didn't score at a certain level and like CRCT back in the day or GMAS now, then you'd have to go to summer school. Um, would it be based, you know, would they have to go if they didn't meet certain criteria in terms of GMAS? Or is it open to everybody? Um.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, we definitely need to, um, offer it to our students in need first, you know, depending on, you know, we would identify. And that's what the schools have been doing right now based on, um, you know, course participation and, and course, you know, how the students are performing in the courses. So they've been identifying these students that really need to come in and that's the students that are being invited in, um, on, you know, Wednesday days at the high school. And, um, so at the moment, we are going to be looking at our promotion and retention criteria here indicator right now. It's, you know, based on SST and yes, um, there does need to be remediation if a student doesn't pass. GMAS for sure. So, um, yes, we would prioritize students in need, but it's not, um, we do not have a policy right now. Where if you don't attend summer school, you don't go on to the next grade. So we usually work through with the students and support them in the next grade level to be successful as, as you know.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, are all of these items, so I think all these are great and, and, you know, it's. Um, I'm, I'm happy that it looks like you all, you all put together a really robust, you know, program. And it's all budgeted. So the big, big numbers that we just looked at for the fiscal year twenty two included. These, including like the intervention, the big ticket items were all included in that. Is that correct?
I think they were, but Lenita, can you jump in? I don't want to speak since I didn't actually put those numbers together. I think I heard you say they're included.
I think she said that remediation is included. So as long as.
We'll double check. What might change is which fiscal year they're included in, um, based on what I was just sharing a minute ago, but I do think they're included. But we will double check.
Well, I, I think it's terrific. I think it's good.
And just to be clear, we, we do hope to implement all of these. Um, there are challenges differently with some of them and Christie touched on the one. And I just want to touch on it again, that the intercession, um, pieces, oh, Lenita just sent me a message. They are included. Um, the intercession pieces for like fall break, for instance, and, um, winter break. They are very dependent on our staff being willing to be hired, um, during those breaks. Um, because the chances of those breaks lining up with people from outside the district are not very good. So I just want to emphasize what Christie said there, um, because we will need staff who will be willing to say, yes, I'm gonna, you know, give up three days. They'll get paid, but they will be giving up three days of a week that they would have had off. So just want to emphasize that, that we will, there, the some may be a little easier to, to pull off than others.
Yeah, and I can also say, um, I, I knew Lenita helped with the numbers. I just didn't know if they were in a hypothetical column or in the actual budget, but. Also, the, um, well, I forgot what I was gonna say. I'm sorry. These number, oh, I know what it was. The estimates are high. I mean, because we don't have a, a ton of data right now. But we do want to be prepared for, you know, a, a significant number of students that may need support. Even though we don't have the data to say that it would be that, that many. So we did go a little bit high, that is true, but. Um, we want to be sure we're well-prepared to support all of our students when they return.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Christie, because we, we don't want to come back to you and say, oh, no, wait, now we need more money and then we need more money. We, we really wanted to try to estimate high. And if anything, we may not need quite as much to meet the need, but we do definitely want it to be need-based.
Um, I want to thank you for putting this plan together. I think it's wonderful that we're going to be able to help our students in this way. I really just wish that every school system would have the funding to be able to do this because every child in public school across this country is going to need this kind of remediation. So I'm grateful that we as a district are looking at doing this and, and have a way to pay for it. I'm interested in the position of the person who is going to be monitoring all of this. Because it sounds like there's gonna be a lot to do. And, um, a lot of these remediation programs. Seems to me right now, we're focused on the, the lowest level of, um, achievement. And where the, maybe the bigger gaps are with the students who are, like, I guess, achieving at the lowest levels. But I'm also concerned about the students in the middle who have gaps and. Maybe missed important concepts that they'll need to build upon and just, I know this is, maybe I'm stating the obvious. But I don't want to overlook the needs of those students as well as the high achieving students who maybe. Didn't grasp fully what they needed to grasp in algebra in order to build on that with algebra two or whatever that is. And so I think. You know, this position, uh, it, you know, it kind of expands and will be an umbrella. For monitoring, you know, all the students and, and, and at the various levels to make sure that we're identifying gaps and helping to remediate those gaps. And then, you know, I'd like to just see a little bit more discussion about. And then, you know, I'd like to just see a little bit more discussion about that and how we, how we will plan to address that for the students, maybe that aren't in the those, but that have still gaps and challenges from this year.
Thank you for bringing that up, Heather. We we forgot to address that as you brought that up before and we should have addressed that and I apologize that we didn't. But Christie, did you want to say something?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I I feel like that's, well, some of what you spoke to, I think is going to be, and I mentioned this to Dr. Duty, I think that this, this is going to be something that impacts education for the rest of my career at least. And through the education of these, you know, the students that are experiencing this right now. And I think there's going to be adjustments in general in the expectations and the norms and and everything going forward. Because, you know, all students are experiencing this worldwide, so we will have to adjust as educators to fill those gaps for the students that typically had not been struggling in the past. I also think, you know, my department and through the multi-tiered system of support, we do monitor that data. But that's, that's where we were talking about in that first slide, really enhancing that. So we are targeting in and we are making sure we are monitoring all students. So if we do see those gaps, even if it's not a typically low performing student, but we see that on this benchmark, there's, there's something going on, we can go back to the school. So we need, you know, the, the, the resources in place, the assessments in place that we can really closely monitor that and then the staffing in place that we can do that closely, so.
Well, and to to hit on the point of that program manager piece was, is also, we need somebody who is willing to have an abnormal schedule. Right? Because a lot of these things are happening either after school or they're happening on Saturdays or they're happening in summer or whatever. And so it would be helpful for us to have, in addition to all the things they're doing, there's also the logistics of when they're doing them, that it's important to have somebody who can be flexible. And so if we can advertise a position that way and make sure it's clear, like the, this is, if if you're looking for the standard nine to five Monday to Friday, this isn't the role for you. But if you're the kind of person who needs this different thing, you, that may fit exactly what you need. So that's another one of the variables there of why it's important to get somebody in who can really serve the program to when they're happening, so. Any other questions on either Lenita's presentation or Christie's presentation? All right, well, big thanks to Lenita and Christie. That was very helpful. So thank you and thank you for all the good questions. We'll make sure to pull that stuff together.
All right, now moving on to district improvement plan?
Yeah, so this is part of our policy monitoring calendar. So you may remember, we have scheduled things for certain months. And February is district improvement plan month. And so I'm really excited to have, turn it over to Maggie Furman to give you an update on where we are with our district improvement plan. So Maggie, you want to take it away?
I do. All right, I'm gonna share my screen. All right, good evening and greetings, Chairman White, Board members and Superintendent Dr. Duty. I'm joining you this evening to share an update on where we are in regards to our district improvement plan and where we're headed for the next five years. Joining me tonight, I have three amazing leaders going to help me with this presentation. I've got Dr. Lily Huddleston, our Executive Director of Equity and Student Support, Dr. Christie Beam, our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Dr. Mary Banks, our Equity Coordinator. First, I want to provide you with some context for where we are currently with our district improvement plan. So as you know, our equity work back began really in earnest. While we know it began with Dr. Duties setting his vision for it, but then when Dr. Huddleston was hired back in two thousand seventeen and launched our district equity plan, and that was kind of pillar one for our district improvement plan. Pillar two came on board in two thousand eighteen when we launched our C S D instructional framework as our academic pillar. And then last year, we added our third pillar, which is building and sustaining positive culture and climate. And that included launching C B I S across the district as well as using restorative practices, enhancing that practice across our district as well. And if you remember, we rewrote our code of conduct to make sure that we were keeping restorative practices as an essential focus as we deal with our students. So we were well into implementation, many key initiatives last year prior to the COVID shutdown. One of these big pieces that we started back in January of two thousand twenty, our district leadership team shared with our school leaders several foundational components for what we want to use to drive our work going forward. And as I mentioned, unfortunately, before we could really gather much traction on that work, COVID brought all of this to a halt. Because we had to redirect many of our resources and time to focus on how to operate school safely and effectively in a pandemic. So the presentation we're sharing with you is actually what we would have shared with you last April. But after the pandemic and getting things up and going, we're really moving this forward again. So as we all know, in City Schools of Decatur, our vision is to build the foundation for all students to be their best, achieve their dreams and to make the world a better place. So what drives us? We believe in City Schools of Decatur that our beliefs drive our actions that which then drive our results. But we also believe that the converse is converse, conversely, we believe that that is the reverse is true as well. That our results are generated by our actions and that our actions are products of our beliefs. I knew it was gonna do this to me just crazy. I haven't done one of these in forever. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. So we use that cyclical process to develop a theory of action. And that is our guide that we are using across the district to help us keep a focus on what our results should be. And also to help us identify specific actions that will lead to fulfillment of our vision and mission. So the key elements of our, of our theory of action are that if C S D establishes a balance between accountability and empowerment with highly effective leaders at the district and school level, that we can ensure our teachers are highly effective and supported in their growth and development as professionals. And finally, that the impact of these elements will result in a district where students can be their best, achieve their dreams and make the world a better place. So we wanted to think big. So we were reviewing our districts, where we were as a district, what our ends policies were, where we wanted to go. And we wanted to think big. And when I say big, we wanted to think really big. So we drafted very big aspirational goals that will help keep us motivated over time. We also wanted to ensure that our equity work is the lens through which we use to plan out of our action steps. Dr. Banks is going to share with you an overview of our equity work. Now, there's a lot of, lot of stuff going on with equity that has been done and that is in the hopper for action steps coming up. She's just going to give you a very high level of that, what that looks like tonight. Dr. Beam is then going to share with you how she's framing the work in our curriculum and instruction department through our equity lens. And then I'll finish up talking about positive culture and climate and what we're doing with that. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Banks.
You so much, Maggie. C S D's Equity Action Plan has been in place and guiding our work since two thousand seventeen, as Maggie mentioned earlier. Teachers, staff, administrators and school equity teams in particular have been working extremely hard to support the plan, even in the face of a pandemic, as evidenced by the E C L C presentation today. It's, our plan is undergirded by the Southern Education Foundation's highly regarded district levers for advancing racial equity. These levers assert that districts must implement research-based, high-leverage policies and procedures that have demonstrated effectiveness and will increase equitable outcomes for all students. This plan's central purpose is to eliminate predictable patterns of academic achievement based on subgroup membership. In other words, to pay C S D's debt to black students who have been historically and systemically disenfranchised by focusing on three primary areas of improvement that together include all of the aforementioned levers. I'll describe each area and share a brief example of ongoing work as well as an example of upcoming work in the area. Area one is normalize. The Equity Action Plan attempts to normalize racial equity in C S D by establishing it as a key value while developing cultural humility and a shared organizational understanding of key concepts related to racial equity for individuals across the district. This shared understanding is built through structured professional learning opportunities regarding topics such as implicit bias, structural and systemic racism and many others. In this area, we have continued to engage in initiatives such as racial affinity groups, some of which are being held now. Beyond diversity, we've held seven so far. We're about to hold another one at the end of this semester and other courageous conversations workshops. And for our students, programs like C Equity and SOAR, which is Students Organized for Anti-Racism. Upcoming initiatives in this area will be, among others, initiating summer workshops such as Exploring Whiteness and Complicating Blackness to engage staff in racial identity development. And developing and instituting a cross-district ju- justice, equity, diversity and inclusion course for grade six through twelve, as well as a similar K through five exploration. We believe that normalizing for equity will result in increased cross-cultural knowledge, engagement, improve culture for students and staff and, most importantly, equitable academic and discipline outcomes by two thousand twenty six. Area two is organize. To organize for racial equity, we have to acknowledge that many aspects of curriculum and instruction slash pedagogy are historically based in overwhelmingly Eurocentric principles and content. Once we acknowledge that, then we need to build the organizational capacity, skills and competencies to decolonize the curriculum and decolonize educator praxis through professional development. In this area, we continue to engage in initiatives such as district and school equity teams that are providing professional development for staff and faculty and in many case, parents. Culturally responsive teaching and the brain-related professional development, which just kicked off recently and we hope will es- only escalate in the months to come. An example of an upcoming initiative in this area will be integrating the evaluation of culturally responsive anti-racist praxis in teacher and administrator evaluations, really bringing up that accountability piece and providing support for teachers who need assistance in these areas and administrators who need assistance in these areas. We believe that organizing for equity will result in increased use of culturally responsive instruction, increased self-efficacy regarding racially and culturally different interactions and equitable academic and discipline outcomes by two thousand twenty six. Area three is operationalize. We will operationalize racial equity by revising, increasing, evaluating and ensuring the implementation of district policy based in equity, anti-racism, cultural humility and culturally responsive curriculum and instruction. For example, in this area, we are in the midst of partnering with Christie and the C N I team as we evaluate C S D Language Arts and Social Studies materials for justice, equity, diversity and inclusion. Examples of upcoming initiatives in these, in this area are training all hiring managers this spring to use our equitable hiring tool to increase justice, equity, diversity and inclusion in hiring. And our collaboration, which Dr. Dutie was so kind to point out earlier, with communications and public relations and launching the new equity website. Sarah Jones really worked hard on this and we had a lot of people in the community who weighed in on this and gave us feedback as well. B P A, D F, Kunle, and just a number of people, and we really appreciate that support. We believe operationalizing for equity will result in increased recruitment and retention of teachers and administrators of color. The inclusion of equity as an evident and pervasive aspect of teacher and administrator evaluation, consistent review and revision of district policies and practices regarding equity and equitable academic and discipline outcomes by two thousand twenty six. And this is just a snapshot of the many things that we have in this plan. As Maggie mentioned, we're really trying to go big. So now I'll turn it over to Christie.
So to disrupt the predictable patterns of academic achievement based on the subgroup membership that we know exists currently in C S D, to ensure the success of all of our students and increase the joy of teaching and learning, we have the four components of the C S D instructional framework that guide our work to accelerate student learning. At the instructional core of this, at the instructional core is the relationship between teachers, students and our instructional standards. Next are core practices for equity that include formative assessment and feedback, student goal setting, culturally responsive teaching and literacy, which includes speaking, listening, reading and writing. And we, these are practices that we believe should be clearly evident on a continuous basis in every classroom. Next, we have our high-leverage instructional practices, which are twelve teaching strategies that yield high lever, high levels of student learning. And teachers should be proficient in selecting and utilizing the appropriate strategies for each lesson. And finally, to tie it all together, we have our I V and E L instructional programs. These programs frame our approach to teaching and learning with an emphasis on graduating students that are empowered to create a better world. So through our intentional strategic instruction, we also have some big goals to achieve in the next five years. I think it's important that these goals are clear, they're easy to understand and our whole community can work towards them. So by two thousand twenty six, we will ensure that all C S D students will meet or exceed their growth, their expected growth targets. Race will not be a predictor of student achievement and all students will exemplify our graduate profile. These are lofty goals, they're aspirational goals, but we can achieve them by working together as a community and ensuring that all students in C S D have access to a guaranteed and viable curriculum through our instructional framework. The third pillar is positive culture and climate. And our mantra with positive culture and climate is that we will ensure students and staff feel safe, seen and successful. Our big goals in this area, by two thousand sixteen, we, what we, our goals are two thousand, yes, yeah, I'm not going back ten years. That two thousand twenty six race will not be a predictor of student discipline outcomes, that all students will have a positive and trusting relationship with at least one adult in their school. And that by two thousand twenty six, staff, students and parents, climate surveys results will show an overall positive experience in City Schools of Decatur. This final goal is a little bit general, but we have a, this year is a baseline year to collect data. So we're hoping that we can fine tune this goal as we move forward. So these are really big goals. So how do we start digging in and making sure that we're making progress towards these? And what we do that is first by setting priorities. With such big goals, we know that it's important to set priorities to make sure our work is focused. And what you can see here is a timeline for how we have started this work since two thousand seventeen and how we're going to continue to build upon our successes. And you'll see the equity work is on the top of this timeline because we believe that is the lens that we should look through everything as we create our action steps. So as Mary shared previously, our Equity Action Plan has been in place and guiding our work since two thousand seventeen. We started with just a few staff participating in Beyond Diversity to nearly all of our instructional staff have been completed the course. And we've extended to additional training for our district and school leadership teams as they participated in Delt and LEED. We've also expanded this work to our schools with their district equity teams. And we are going to continue with all of these established activities as well as all the additional things that Mary shared coming up on the docket. And then also rolling out culturally responsive teaching, training and support for our staff so that we make sure that we have an anti-racist classroom every day and every classroom in City Schools of Decatur. As Christie shared earlier, our instructional framework was developed to ensure that there was a clear standard for what daily instruction should look like in all our classrooms, regardless of the grade or subject area. We know that at the core, that begins with our teachers, students and the content. Last year, we started to engage our staff in unpacking and supporting our teachers to ensure that all teachers were effectively using our core practices for equity. This work began with a focus on formative assessment and feedback. And in the years to come, we are also going to roll out expectations and training in literacy, student goal setting and as Mary mentioned, culturally relevant teaching practices. And last year, we launched our P B I S district wide. And I think we had a really great start to that implementation, but again, thanks to COVID, we had to pause our work in this area. However, we haven't forgotten However, we haven't forgotten where we left off, and we are ready to gear back up to ensure that we are ready to launch right back into PBIS when we welcome all of our students back into our building, not just this year, but as we continue in the years ahead. We also, also are going to tr- help, um, continue to train additional staff every year on using restorative practices and embedding those practices for our primary response and how we address student behavior. So along with those priorities, we've identified some core initiatives to help us make sure that we have a laser focus on our work going forward. And first, as always, we're going to start with equity, and we have all, obviously, all lots of additional activities with our district equity plan that we're going to continue over the next five years as our core focus. Um, district, um, to make sure we are focused on district policy, culturally responsive, anti-racist instruction. We want to also ensure that we've embedded equity in all of our work and use our equity lens to guide all district policies and practices. I think Christie, were you gonna share about the accelerated student learning?
So accelerating student learning to achieve our goals is tightly intertwined with the other two pillars. Students need a safe, positive environment to be able to unleash their full potential. Specifically, we will continue to provide high-quality resources and training in our core practices for equity and high-leverage practices. In the next five years, our areas of focus will include resource equity, the allocation and effective use of resources to create student experiences that enable all students to reach empowering, rigorous learning outcomes, no matter their race or income. Curriculum mapping to identify and address academic gaps, redundancies, and misalignments to improve our overall coherence of our, um, preschool through twelve instructional program. As, as we mentioned several times, through highly effective formative assessment and feedback and student goal setting, we will help our students to identify moves to achieve higher levels and gradually transfer responsibility, uh, in the learning process so that our students become leaders of their own learning. Another important area of focus is ensuring that all of our instructional decisions are data-driven, that we are consistently evaluating effectiveness of practice and making adjustments at the student, classroom, school, and district level.
And then in regards to positive culture and climate, our key priorities here are going to be continuing to implement and deepen our implementation of PBIS over the next five years, also working to enhance our use of restorative practices. Uh, we're also going to be expanding our use of the social emotional learning curriculum that we started this year in our elementary schools to expand up through twelfth grade. We're also going to invest some resources in reviewing our multi-tiered system of support for behavior interventions. And then finally, we don't want to leave our staff out. We definitely want to make sure that we are taking time to recognize and, um, appreciate the staff for all the hard work that they do each and every day. So what are our next steps? We do have a lot of work to do, but over the next few months, we're going to, going to be engaging with several stakeholder groups to provide input on our direction and our goals. Once we've reviewed this feedback, we're also going to take into consideration the final report from our accreditation review to make sure that we've incorporated any of the areas to be addressed from Cognia. And then finally, we will wrap all that up together in a nice package so that by June first, two thousand twenty-one, we have a very solid district improvement plan to, um, launch and make sure we are ready to get all the gears moving over the summer. So any questions?
Yeah, I just want to jump in real quick, and first of all, thank you all for the awesome presentation. I love that you used Prezi. I haven't seen a Prezi for a long time. Um, I hope you all are excited as I am, like, the way they pulled all of this together, um, I just think is the, the, a new standard for how we're trying to move forward with how we present information and how we kind of, um, market it, right? Um, and the other thing I want to point out is, um, I'm sure it was obvious, um, but there's a reason we labeled those big goals. Um, because we have decided that, um, we want to push ourselves as hard as we possibly can. And so, um, we had a lot of conversations about, do you set realistic goals that you're pretty sure you can achieve, or do you set goals that will just push you unbelievably and you might not quite reach? And we decided we really would rather push ourselves to maybe unattainable heights and get much further than if we were safe and, and set things reasonably. So I hope you're excited as I am to see those goals on, on, written down, um, to say by two thousand twenty-six, that is right around the corner, um, and we are just super excited to take that on and um, just see if we really can do it, right, and just push ourselves to let this assume we can do it and do everything we can to get to that point. And if we fall a little short, we'll be much further ahead than we would have been otherwise. So, um, I'm just really excited to see that, see that. And, and thank all four of you for the presentation. That was very informative and helpful. So, any questions or comments from the board?
I was gonna say, I, I mean, I'm so excited and inspired as a former Runfor Equity team member and Beacon Hill member. It's really exciting to see, um, how, uh, you know, this issue of equity is, is growing in, in the city of Decatur and, um, as, um, Dr. Banks always, always reminds us of, you know, repaying this debt. I was really excited to hear about decolonizing the curriculum and I don't know, it's probably not gonna be possible on a school board meeting, but I was just interested in that and learning more about that because I know that, um, our state standards and curriculum and, and common core can make that challenging. And so, um, so I'm, I'm just interested in, in learning more about that. Um, and then the, the one thing I just had me thinking about a lot, um, when we first received, um, information, um, from Dr. Duty was, um, race is not a predictor of student achievement. And I was just kind of, I struggled with that just a little bit in terms of, you know, I, I understand race is not a predictor of student discipline outcomes because there's somebody else that's um, responsible for those student outcome in terms of what the outcomes are, right? That's outside of the, the child's, um, typically the outcomes outside of the, the students. Well, now that we're doing restorative practices, you know, hopefully not so, but anyway. So I'm just saying that I just feel like somehow expectations are what influence the student achievement as it relates to race. And not necessarily, because it almost gives me the impression that if you're a certain race, you might be starting off as a deficit, but just because you're this race, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that you're, that you still excel. And so that's just how, I just thought about that as a, as I was reading this initially, and then again now is that I just kind of feel like maybe we might consider rewording that just a little because I feel like it's more the expectations of others that will often determine student achievement be based on race.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing that, Jana. That's a good perspective, and, and we'll definitely talk more about that. Um, the way we think of it, um, and I, I totally understand, and I appreciate you clarifying, there's different ways to look at it. The way we think of it, when we say it, is we're not, it's not like we're using it to blame a child for their situation, right? For us, it is, what do we have to do to make sure we have paid that education debt, right? What do we have to do to make sure that that child has all of the support that they need in order to be successful? And that is our responsibility to make sure that they're successful. It's not the child's responsibility to make sure they're successful. Now, obviously, part of that is building in them the fortitude to do those things, right? So think about our end policies and like the, um, uh, characteristics we want to build in our students. Part of it is them taking on to be leaders of their own learning, right, and things like that, and making sure that we have, um, we've built the skills within the kids themselves. And so, of course, those expectations change a little bit as kids get older and things like that. But I think we're on the same page, but I appreciate the feedback because we definitely don't want people to interpret it differently than what we're intending. So thank you for that. We'll, we'll take a look and see if there's maybe a better way to say that.
And, and Jana, our, um, the, the intent of that is that when we look at, for example, our CCRPI subgroup data, there is no distinction, there is not that, um, gap in percentage of students that are distinguished and proficient that currently exists between black and white students. So if you have suggestions on the wording of that, I would love, you know, that would be great if you could share that. But that is the, we want no, um, difference, and we do not want that to be a predictor of those.
No, I understand the intent behind it. Thank you.
I've read it as just aimed towards the absence of racial bias in academic achievement data, you know? And so it's on us as we're cultivating the data, not the students. And, um, I've shared that I, when someone says that like, high achievement is a white thing, or academic success is, is, is a white thing, that, oh my God, you know, that's, that's horrendous. And so, uh, Jana, thank you for sharing that. I, I agree with you that we can put, the more we can put it on us, on us as educators, um, the better than we can always be. Jana, if, if you didn't have anything else to share, uh, just the combination of this, this website that we got earlier and this, I want to thank you for all the effort that's gotten into it. We've talked about it that, um, so often in the ca- we talk about um, showing our warts or, um, being proud of the, of identifying it. And, and Dr. Banks, you've motivated me when, when we met and you talked about the SLT and stuff. And just being able to point towards stuff for people in this community that we are doing stuff is so powerful. Because even if it, Natasha spoke about it a little bit, I thought in her state of the, you know, the state of the schools, it's like, we're making a little progress, and it's okay to be proud of a little bit and, and scared that it's not enough and it's, and, and it needs to be more. And so I thank you all for fighting the fight every day for our kids and our community, and, and this website's a great start, and this presentation's great. Um, so, um, Louis says it confuses him. It confuses me when we go through that second chart. So I really like the apples. Dr. Olson, I think you got credit for that on the chart. I know that looked really simple, but ooh, I liked it. So. Thank you all.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Just really, really great work. Um, I think it's so easy when we have our heads down and we're doing the work to forget that we need to communicate it, and I thought that was very well communicated. I think we will, you know, we, we know that progress is slow in the beginning, and I, I think now that we're years into it, I'm hopeful that we will now also be able to show progress. And I appreciate the lofty goals. I know that's a recurring conversation that we've had. And even when we rewrote our policy manual a couple of years ago, we had a very similar conversation. Like, do we, do we put in lofty goals that may, we may not immediately achieve? And I think we're on the same page there, that I think we need to put where we would like to be and then figure out how we're gonna get there. So I appreciate that and all your hard work. Really great work. I'm excited to dig into the website as well. Thank you.
I'll just sort of repeat everything everybody said. I'm, I'm, I, it's just terrific. And I, you know, starting with the equity action plan and website, and then this, we've talked a lot over the years about how to present these improvement plans and action plans generally, so that we can understand them and that people generally can understand them. And I don't think it's only about communicating and sort of taking credit for what we're doing. I think if you, you know, like, I got excited as y'all delivered that plan just now. And it shows me that we all sort of are, have the same goals and the same priorities, and we're all pushing in the same direction. And by packaging it so nicely, you've done the work to say, and here are the three pillars of, of our program, and here is our focus, and here are our core initiatives. So if we're all gonna be working together, we all actually know what we're working, you know, we, we, we know how to, how to chip in and, and how to be part of the team and, and where we're all headed. So I think it's terrific, and I think it's, um, on both counts, the equity action plan and this, they're both, I think, illustrate the values of having it packaged and put together and communicated in that way. Just thank you for it. It's wonderful.
Thanks, Louis.
Yes, I echo all of that. I thank the four doctors who Okay, okay. Right. Um, so I just wanted to thank you, you all for, um, a wonderful pres- presentation. I think that, um, it's been really hard to find the, the light and the inspiration these last year. Um, from, um, our school board meetings have been very heavy and necessary but heavy. And so that just kind of brought in, I think, the light that we needed. And I remember taking some of the, um, courageous conversation classes. We would talk about how you have to meet people where they are, you meet the community where you, where they are. And so there was all of these baby steps that we needed to take. You know, and in my head, I was thinking, you know, we should be here five years ago, and we couldn't be. And so just even as Jano mentioned, the decolonizing cu- curriculum, I mean, that is, that is a type of language and verbiage and, um, you know, acknowledgement that I think is like so necessary and so important, and we're, we're finally there and ready to, to say that. We couldn't have said that five years ago. Um, and so, um, that just shows that we, we are moving in the right direction. Even if it doesn't feel like it's moving fast enough, we are certainly moving in the right direction. So I too, like Louis, I'm excited about, um, you know, the plan and the, the website, um, and just the cohesiveness that it looks like you all doctors have achieved. Um, so, yeah, proud, very proud moment. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you all. That was fantastic. Figured out. Makes me want to talk about board newsletters.
Is that what we're talking about next, board newsletter?
If you get it. So final topic, board newsletter. We tried a little different approach, and I'd like to get your feedback on it. But, um, you know, I really, I would like us to get to the point that we get the board newsletter out the same week as the board meeting. And so, um, we're trying a new approach where we're bringing you the draft with a lot of things written. Um, so then you can give us feedback on, did we get it? Did we hit the right topics? Are there more topics you want? And we're hoping that this may streamline things a little bit so that maybe, like, by Friday after each board meeting, we can get that newsletter out. So, um, there's a draft link there that you, um, can pull up, and of course, the link to the old newsletters. Um, and so I just wanted to touch on real quickly, sorry, let me pull it up here. We've got the, um, a, a little quick thing to make sure that the people, recipients of this newsletter know we have new board officers. Um, and about our second semester plans, we'll have a little thing there, some of the budget highlights, um, the home fed exemption, um, and the annexation things that we're working on with the DCA board. Are there any other things that you think we should include there or any other thoughts on what I just shared?
Um, I think it's important that it's succinct and short because our target audience has a short, very, uh, you know, attention span. Um, I didn't hear you mention equity, but it might be worth the blurb about what we just talked about, some links to our new site and to our presentation.
That was really the only thing I think I would add. I would love to highlight the, the, the website and the, the district improvement plan.
And just so you know, uh, we were, uh, communicating offline here and decided we're gonna clip out that presentation that you just saw um, and share that more broadly, because I just think they really nailed it with, uh, um, going through that improvement plan. And so we could even like put a link to it, um, right in this newsletter and some other venues, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, we will plan on doing that then, um, and you've got the future dates that are listed there, and I just want to remind you, I think we want to, um, rejoin, um, exec session to finish up our topics from earlier. So we don't need to actually adjourn this meeting, um, but we can end this link, and you can actually, um, join back in using the link that we used before. Maybe after a quick little break.
Okay.
I, I think we have to, don't we have to, uh, make a motion to go back?
Yes.
So this ends our public portion of our, um, board meeting for February ninth, and we will need a motion to break off into exec session for personnel. Seconded, anybody? Does, do we have to do that? Okay.
Yep, yep, we're good. We got a motion and a second. Anyone opposed? All right, so we'll go ahead and end this link, um, just because of the logistics of Zoom. And so if you guys can connect to the one from earlier, we'll, uh, convene that. What do you think, Tasha, in like five, five or 10 minutes, maybe?
Yeah, let's join back in five minutes at ten-ten and just be real quick.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody.